Madam Clerk, we're going to call this meeting to order of the Sacramento City Council on December 12, 2023 at 5:10 p.m. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll to establish your quorum?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Kaplan.
Here.
Councilmember Laloie.
Here.
Expect Councilmember Talamontes momentarily. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Councilmember Maple.
Here.
Vice Mayor Guerra.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Vang.
Here.
And I expect the mayor momentarily also.
Very well. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Kaplan, would you mind leading us in the land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance?
Please rise for the opening acknowledgement in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nisanon people, the Southern Maidu, the Valley and Plains Miwok, the Putwan Windtoon peoples, and the peoples of the Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe, may we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather today in active practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous people's history, contributions, and lives. Please remain standing. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for joining us today to the Sacramento City Council. Some of you may have noticed that there is also a special meeting calendar. Once the 5 o'clock council meeting business is concluded, then we will adjourn the council meeting and then begin the special council, special order of the day council meeting. With that, Madam Clerk, can you please call the first item?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We move to the consent calendar, items 1 through 26. And I believe Councilmember Jennings would like to pull item 6 for a separate vote.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Clerk. So, council item 6 will be pulled from consent for a separate vote. Are there items that the council members would like to speak on, on these items?
17.
17 by Kaplan. And then, Councilmember Valenzuela?
I'd like to provide direction as part of the motion on item 19.
Okay. Direction on item 19. And then I have a direction on a couple items here that I'll note, Madam Clerk, once I get back to my chair. With that, other items on the consent calendar. If not, then, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and move to the public comment on items on the consent calendar.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have three speakers on the consent calendar, with the exception of item 6. The first is Michael Meyer on item 4, Isaac Gonzalez on item 5, and 13. Michael Moyer. Following Michael is Isaac.
Thank you for your time. I'm here to talk about the parking initiative out in Elmhurst. I don't believe it is the will of the residents in Elmhurst. I don't believe it solves any of the problems. It mostly impacts the essential workers at UC Davis. I did attend the Elmhurst Community Association meeting in October to get some information on the parking changes. Myself and some others opposed those changes, but we were told by Mr. Guerra's staff that a vote would be mailed out to residents on the issue and it would go out and voted on. So, we dropped opposition. A few weeks later, we received a notice by mail of the proposed change, but no ballot was sent out. It appeared to my neighbor that they didn't have enough votes to pass the change, and so it was decided that a Google form would be sent out to decide. It was not mailed. It was distributed by hand on porches and also by the association via email. Mine was underneath the chair on my porch, and I completely dismissed it. It looked to me like a Cash for Homes form. I usually get a lot of those flyers. Anyone can anonymously fill out the survey, and they can do it from anywhere. They do not even need to live in Sacramento. The impact here is on our essential workers. It only occurs Monday through Friday from 8 o'clock to 4:30. Making this change will not make anything better in Elmhurst. It only hurts our lowest wage essential workers at UC Davis. It will then push that problem out to a new location, south or east. I've been there for three years. This problem is temporary. It's only been in the last year. It's going to change as the UC Davis construction waxes and wanes. I would ask that this item be pulled from the consent block.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is now complete. Our next speaker is Isaac Gonzalez on items 5 and 13, then Sherri Pembert on 4, and James Allison on 12.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. My name is Isaac Gonzalez. I live in Tahoe Park, president of Tahoe Park Neighborhood Association. For item 5 this evening, just want to thank all of the city staff, our Parks Commission and commissioners, especially Victoria Vlazquez, for their efforts working on the 21st Avenue Park project due to some state legislation and the ongoing drought situation we'll no doubtily be experiencing over the next few decades. You know, it's been deemed that medians in ornamental grass should not be watered and maintained, so I'm so happy that the city has pivoted and looked at adaptive reuses for this space. This whole community is deficient as far as green spaces go, so to have this investment of different capacity and infrastructure there is a wonderful reuse. So, I know it was not an easy road to get to this point. I know there was many different opinions and challenges to get here, so just want to thank everybody for their steadfast efforts and commend them and in full support of the item.
Thank you for your comments. Sherri Pembert, or Rembrandt, James Allison, then Lords Aon.
Sherri Pemberton.
Sherri Pemberton.
Thank you, Sherri Pemberton. I'm a resident of Elmhurst, and I wanted to thank Vice Mayor Guerra for sponsoring or supporting the residential parking extension proposal in Elmhurst. This isn't radical or shouldn't be controversial. There are parking regulations throughout Sacramento and in Elmhurst in particular. Most of the neighborhood already has parking regulations. Extending it will improve our air quality, make our neighborhood safer, and it's just hugely needed, and it's been a problem that's been growing for some time, and urge your support. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. James Allison on item 12, then Lords Aon on item 4.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, council members and staff. My name is James Allison with the Midtown Association, representing over 1,200 properties in our central city. Our mission is to make Midtown the center for culture, creativity, and vibrancy in Sacramento's urban core. I'm here today to speak very briefly on the current proposal to expand the scope of work being performed by Kaiser Marston Associates. I would like to be clear in stating that we do not object to the expenditure of additional funds for expanded services. However, we do hold some concern regarding the nature of the work conducted and the potential for further discrepancy upon the results of these analyses if they are not conducted with great care. Excuse me. The affordability gap and residential nexus analyses could both become valuable tools in working to craft policy. However, if certain conditions and elements are not factored, we will be left with a fragmented picture of the obstacles facing us. It is imperative that the development community is engaged while these studies are conducted in order to ensure that the incredibly complex factors that go into the financing and construction of affordable and market rate housing are properly and appropriately considered in the end findings. We look forward to working closely with the research team in any capacity that we are able in order to preemptively mitigate any potential discrepancies like those we have seen with previous analysis. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Lords Aon on item 4. This is our final speaker on consent.
Yes, hi, Vice Mayor and Council. Hello, how are you? I want to, first of all, thank Vice Mayor Guerra for taking on the parking restriction initiative for the, for, in the Elmhurst neighborhood. It is incredibly needed. I've been a resident of Elmhurst for the last five years, and the problem with respect to parking has been growing and becoming a real issue for the neighborhood in the area where I live in particular. I feel that the community has become overflow parking for UC Davis. We're not trying to say anything against the good people that work there. I just want to make sure that I can access my home. I do not have a driveway nor a garage. As you know, some of those homes there don't have, are very old, and they don't have that kind of access to the home. Also, the area where I live, my neighbors are a little bit more elderly, and they've expressed concern regarding safety about making turns in that street because it's so congested with cars on both sides of the street. It's really hard to make safe turns on either side because it's blocked. Cars can't, you can't fit four cars in that street, so there's always, people have to move over and to make room for others. I feel that this initiative is important for the community. It's important for my neighbors, and it's important for me, and I appreciate your support on it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Vice Mayor, I have no more speakers on the consent calendar.
Very good. Let me first go with the direction needed on an item. That's item 19. Then I'll go to Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Item 19 around cooperative purchase agreements. I don't want to relitigate the previous discussions we've had about ByBoard, which was sponsored by the Texas Association of School Boards, but do appreciate the police department for clarifying that they're only included in this list if there is not a better price available through one of the other vendors. And so, I just want to make that clear in the direction because it wasn't clear in the staff report that ByBoard only be utilized when there is no cost-effective alternatives through the other vendors we're approving.
Assistant City Managers, is that clear direction?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Let me go over here to Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just want to call out that we appreciate GoBiz and getting extra funding for our cannabis and creating equity. So, you know, I think it's something good to be called out of. We continue to get support from the state for addressing our issues on equity. And then I just want to mirror a follow-up on the Kaiser Marston Associates item 12. Was the one that did ask for this to be delayed till now until we actually had the conversation. At some point, I would like feedback from staff on what actually is the extension and what are they looking into. I think that's relevant, you know, since we had a wide range, different views, many thing, conversation of how we make the report as valid as possible with the extension.
Very good. Thank you, Member Council, Mayor Kaplan. Assistant City Manager on item number 12, if we could follow back on feedback on the definition or clarity on the extension. Thank you very much. Okay. And then Assistant City Manager and for the Department of Youth, Parks, and Community Engagement on, I need a read into the record on item number 5. Currently, the staff report identifies a fenced playground area for ages 5 to 12, and due to the constraints and size, community input as well on that area of the stripway, the recommendation and the change to be read into the record is to change that to a totlot, a smaller size footprint of two, the two-year-olds to five. Now, however, this is not in the draft plan as presented tonight, so I want to make sure that the staff, is that, Ms. Beecham, is that clear enough into the record for this item?
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. Yes, that is clear.
Very good.
We will change the totlot to two to five.
Fantastic. Thank you. And also want, I see our Public Works Department here. I want to stress again and provide some direction, Assistant City Manager, for Public Works to explore options, you know, prior to the, any, any opening of a facility here for the medium to address the residents' needs, particularly when it comes to traffic safety, pedestrian concerns, safe crossings, and the reduction in slow speeds on that strip of 21st Avenue. Any questions to that, Assistant City Manager? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, and I have one comment for the council on item 4, and I do want to thank folks that have showed up to speak on that item. Thank you, Mr. Moyer, for our conversation on that. Do want to thank Stacy, who is, I think this is your first item for parking, and I know this was not an easy one, you know? When it comes to parking or anyone's vehicles, it becomes a very contentious issue, so I just personally wanted to thank the staff for their involvement in this. We had well over 200 respondents in this survey that went out. I believe there were two notices, also mailed notices to the residents as well. Over, of those two, over 200 respondents, we had above 70% that supported the item and 20% that opposed, 10% who didn't live in the affected area who responded as well. So, with that, Assistant City Manager, I'd like to make sure that we move forward with this item, as well as I want to make sure that for our staff that worked there and Stacy, if we can make sure we follow up with the neighborhood on the appropriate outreach process of how the process would go if this item is approved by the city council. With that, I don't see any members punched up on the consent calendar for other items, so I'll bring it back to the council. Madam Clerk, for a motion or action on any items on the council.
It's been moved by Councilmember Valenzuela with the direction identified and the direction
identified by both houses. Seconded by Councilmember Maple. Any other items? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Measure passes? Want to make sure we have a quorum here. Good, good. Measure passes. Okay, Madam Clerk, we pulled item 6.
Yes, Vice Mayor. Yes, Vice Mayor. Item 6 is to establish a fund capital improvement project for community outreach and pilot dog park program at William Land Park, and I believe Director Beecham is going to present first. Mr. Jennings, did you want to open it up or have Jackie?
No, I'd like her to present first, then I'd like to have opening comments after that.
Good evening again, Vice Mayor and Council. My name is Jackie Beecham. I'm the director of the Youth, Parks, and Community Enrichment Department. So, I wanted to provide some background on the item that we're bringing forward tonight. Since October of 2022, staff have been working with the community and council offices to address concerns of off-leash use at Sierra Two Park. Sierra Two Park is a neighborhood park that includes a soccer field, playground, basketball court, and is adjacent to the Sierra Two Community Center. In 2001, the Parks Department agreed to allow an organized dog training group from the Curtis Park neighborhood to use Sierra Two for dog training activities during specified but also limited hours. This special agreement was not brought before city council. Documentation from the organized dog training group has also explicitly stated that Sierra Two Park is not a city-approved dog park, and priority shall be given to youth sports user groups that pay permit fees, and that the city may cancel the agreement should certain conditions not be met related to health and safety issues and impacts to the neighborhood. Documentation regarding this prior agreement also acknowledges that use of the park for organized dog training has evolved over time, resulting in several complaints involving off-leash use and concerns of safety and park access. The department has received multiple reports over the years with a significant increase following the pandemic regarding off-leash use happening at all hours and not in a formal dog training manner. The design of Sierra Two Park does not meet the requirements of an off-leash dog park, including its size and the proximity to other amenities at the park. Still, in December of 2022, YPSI installed a temporary pop-up park at Sierra Two to allow residents to continue using the space safely and to also evaluate the opportunity for a permanent designated dog park at Sierra Two. The layout was even configured during the temporary period based on feedback that we received from park users. Evaluation of the temporary pop-up park over an 11-month period indicated that the available area is too small and has become a significant maintenance burden during its implementation. The small space with a natural grass surface was prone to excess wear when combined with heavy dog use. The high impact of exercising dogs running back and forth across the grass largely prevented regrowth and recovery of grass to maintain any overall vitality. Dogs digging into the natural soil with such a small area also created maintenance difficulties. Inclement weather conditions have also created slip and fall concerns as the areas without grass coverage have become very muddy and very slippery when wet, resulting in closure over the last several weeks. Additionally, during implementation of the temporary pop-up park, over 450 3-1-1 reports were made at Sierra Two. A significant number of reports referenced off-leash dog use outside of temporary, the temporary park, noise complaints, and maintenance issues on the green, including holes and dog feces. For all of these reasons, the temporary park pop-up trial period has ended. Over the last year, staff conducted a survey and an open house where eight concept plans were presented to the community, assessing the potential of a dog park near the Sierra Two and Curtis Park neighborhood. Results from the survey indicated that Sierra Two, an option in Land Park, and the expansion of Belle Coolidge Park received the most support for exploring a dog park location. While Sierra Two was the top preferred choice concept plan, it also received the largest numbers of votes against that location. The Sierra Two concept plan also included the elimination of existing amenities like the sports field in order to accommodate a size that meets industry standards. Staff did not present a shared or mixed-use option as research of other dog park programs and the historical shared use at Sierra Two has presented significant safety concerns and maintenance issues. So, results from the open house and community input were taken into consideration along with several other criteria, including industry design standards, the availability of space, research of other dog park programs, and the evaluation of the pop-up program over 11 months. That brings us to the item that staff are presenting before you tonight. We recognize the community's desire for additional dog parks. We also recognize the importance of park spaces that create a sense of community and provide equitable access for all to enjoy. So, staff are recommending the establishment of a capital improvement project to further fund, to fund further community outreach to explore the option of a permanent dog park at William Land Park, which is a regional park here in our city. Staff are also recommending further research of a pilot dog park program that may include an unfenced off-leash designated dog area at William Land Park in the appropriate location. This is a recommendation that came from community feedback over the last year and is a type of program that's currently implemented by other organizations. With the approval and funding of this project, we're committed to continuing community outreach through all parts of this process, including meetings with our community members, stakeholders, Parks Commission, and then ultimately council. Thank you.
Thank you. I really thank you for the presentation and the work that's been done on this since 2021. It's been a lot of work. The communication that I've received is related to the feeling by some residents of Curtis Park that are frustrated with the fact that their community will not have dog park facilities. Many residents that I've talked to or have received information from saw the staff report that speaks about Land Park only. They would like to make sure that Land Park and Curtis Park are considered as we bring those groups together. I want to be able to mirror the process that we will be undertaking in Land Park with a similar process that looks like the other identified options other than Sierra Two Green for a potential neighborhood-serving dog park. There were three options that were identified. I would like to work with the neighborhood to have a discussion on dog park options with SCNA, advocacy groups, and neighbors to explore whether a dog park would work in the community of Curtis Park. I would also like to use District 7 PIF funds to facilitate this discussion, and I just would like to know, is that something that we can commit to tonight?
I can confirm there is the availability of District 7 PIF funds to support that process.
Thank you very much. So, with that, I'd like to, how many public comments do we have?
I have 19 speakers on this item.
Good. I'd like to hear from the 19 public comments since they have made their way here to City Hall, and then I'll have comments to wrap up.
Thank you. I'm going to call a couple names. Feel free to line up in the aisle if you'd like. Rick Stevenson, Sheila Inos, David Gonzalez, Dan Bernstein. Each person will have two minutes to address the council. You'll see the timer on the screen behind you. Mr. Stevenson?
Okay. It starts when I start? Is that it? Okay, fine. I was waiting for it to start. Anyway, yeah, Rick Stevenson, many of you know me. I've walked dogs in William Land Park and up and down what's now called the Del Rio Trail since I was eight years old. Very familiar with the area. The main thing I like about the proposal that's up for tonight or discussion is that there's no fencing. The reason why the Land Park Community Association was created was to fight more fencing off of William Land Park. And so, that's, that was the actual nature of the whole thing. There is one option that's very logical and could be used for a number of neighborhood dog parks, and that is, and was not considered at all, and that is the Del Rio Trail. There's plenty of room there. There is a lot of acreage on it. There could be much larger spaces that can be used in William Land Park. Further, the spot in William Land Park that's mentioned, or the spot number two on 19th, that's where major events go, and they're looking for more major event revenue, which means you're cutting potential revenue to the park as well as cutting off park use. So, I would ask that they add the Del Rio Trail, because the Del Rio Trail actually touches William Land Park, you know, across Riverside Boulevard. So, that's my request. Please add that to it.
Yes. Sheila?
Hello. Hello, good evening. First, I'd like to thank YPC Director Jackie Beecham and Councilmember Rick Jennings for their decision to remove the temporary pop-up dog park enclosure at Sierra Two Neighborhood Park. I also urge council members to support establishing a new capital improvement project to install a dog park in William Land Park Regional Park. A dog park in the Land Park area will serve more of the District 7 constituency and city at large. Additionally, there are more options to explore in Land Park to place a dog park that is not across the street from homes. The temporary dog park at Sierra Two is under 50 feet from existing homes. There are 20 homes surrounding Sierra Two Park, and the property lines of 15 of the 20 homes is 41 feet on average from the park fence. We have owned our home in Curtis Park for almost 20 years. We've raised three children, who are now 24, 21, and 17. And we also currently have two dogs. I love my dogs. Throughout the years, we've utilized and enjoyed all of the amenities at Sierra Two Park, and we want the open space at Sierra Two to remain as it is for generations to come. A permanent dog park would take up the majority of the park and forever change the atmosphere and landscape. Opposition to a dog park in Land Park is shortsighted, and the insistence to have one at Sierra Two is unreasonable and amuses only those who believe they are entitled to it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. David Gonzalez, Dan Bernstein, then Anne Linton.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, Madam Clerk. My name is David Gonzalez, and I live in Curtis Park. Thank you for allowing me to be here this evening to speak in support of council item number six. I support the appropriation of $200,000 to explore the option of a dog park in Land Park. Any effort in this respect obviously should include the direct participation of the Land Park Neighborhood Association and the Land Park community at large. After having lived next door to an industrial dog facility for nearly a year, I can tell you that a larger park that does not have homes immediately adjacent to the proposed area is a better fit. I urge your support of the item. I would also like to take this opportunity to thank Councilmember Jennings and the park staff, Director Beecham, for their thoughtful work relative to the temporary dog park at Sierra Two. Specifically, thank you for ending the failed experiment. Sierra Two is a small neighborhood park that is meant to serve the immediate neighborhood, not the much larger city from which dog owners have been drawn. Also, the idea of sharing the space will not work. We moved into the neighborhood in 2009 with one child and added a second a few years later. The primary reason we were interested in this home was because of the proximity to the park. Having a park nearby has numerous benefits for children that I won't go into this evening. My oldest was the park champion on the monkey bars for a couple of years. As their mobility improved, we started taking the kids to the grass area in the park. Unfortunately, off-leash dogs would knock them down and frighten them. After this happened over and over, my kids no longer wanted to go to the park. Soon, my sweet kids developed a fear of dogs and were too afraid to go to the park. Recently, my youngest, a 12-year-old, and I were playing basketball at Sierra Two Basketball Courts. Our baller went over the fence into the dog park because it is immediately adjacent to the basketball court in this small park. My child was too afraid to go get her basketball. Shared space doesn't work. So, thank you, Councilmember Jennings and park staff, for prioritizing the safety of our children and returning Sierra Two to a family park. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Dan Bernstein, Anne Linton, Melissa McKenzie, then Eric F.
our children and returning Sierra Two to a family park. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Dan Bernstein, Anne Linton, Melissa McKenzie, then Eric Fay.
Good evening. I've lived in Curtis Park for about 37 years. I've had dogs, large dogs, there for 25 years, and I've enjoyed taking my dogs to Sierra Two. There are many good reasons for keeping Sierra Two as a shared space. A lot of them have been communicated to Parks and Councilmember Jennings as well. And we thought we had a process for working out a compromise. The city had an open house at Sierra Two Community Center in July, promised us they were going to have more to revise the plans based on community input. And as Councilmember Jennings alluded to, we are now very frustrated by the process because just last week, we were informed that the temporary dog park at Sierra Two was being shut down, that Land Park was going to be funded immediately for a dog park, and Curtis Park, which has hundreds of homeowners with dogs that like to regularly exercise their dogs, that like to keep them within walking distance so that they too can have some exercise and some social opportunities, would no longer have any place within our neighborhood to take our dogs to run off leash. Instead, apparently, we have to go to Land Park. So, I would ask that, in addition to pulling this item from the consent calendar, that the council not take any action on funding a dog park in Land Park until further options can be explored for Curtis Park. Once we have identified a workable solution in Curtis Park, then it makes sense to go forward with funding a project that will benefit the neighbors of Curtis Park, which is where this entire issue arose. This is not, understandably, Land Park has a need for additional dog parks as well, but it seems odd to us that a process that began with satisfying the need of Curtis Park residents has now resulted in immediately funding a new dog facility for Land Park, which is inaccessible to many of our neighbors.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Anne Linton, Melissa McKenzie, Eric Fay.
Honorable Mayor, council members, I'm Annie Linton, and I want to speak in strong support of this resolution. The need for more off-leash dog areas can be best accommodated in a large regional park where it can be sited away from competing children's uses and surrounding homes. The Land Park proposal is a big win for off-leash dog users in 95818. It's very nearby, and it can more equitably serve citywide users than a neighborhood park under three acres. On behalf of the more than 100 residents of Curtis Park who signed our letter to the city opposing the creation of a permanent dog park at Sierra Two Park, I wish to express my profound gratitude to Parks and Director Beecham and to Councilmember Jennings for the decision not to cite a permanent dog park there. Sierra Two Park can now return to being a park that is open to everyone, whereas a permanent dog park would have excluded most park users, including youth sports. Thank you for putting children and safety first. I recognize that this decision is really disappointing to some, but it's backed up by nearly a year-long trial period during which off-leash dogs were outside of the temporary enclosure every day, which eroded public confidence in shared use. I certainly do not contest the experiences of those who are saddened by the city's decision, but many of us had very different experiences and were unable to use the field because of the volume of off-leash dogs. I was CC'd on dozens of testimonials to the city in which parents described their children being chased, knocked down, and nipped. Feces and holes on the soccer field were hazards for young players. Many ecomments in support of this resolution also described the negative impacts of off-leash dog use on other park users. Moreover, Sierra Two Park received the most "no" votes of any option at the open house by far, 171 of them. So, I want to thank Parks for making the right decision to close the dog park at Sierra Two Park, and I strongly support the idea of a new dog park in very nearby Land Park.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Melissa McKenzie, David Fay, Joe Flores.
Thank you, Mayor Steinberg, Councilmember Jennings, and the rest of the council for allowing us to speak tonight. My name is Melissa McKenzie, and I purchased a home on Donner Way in Curtis Park almost 25 years ago. I live there now with my partner Terry and our two rescue dogs, Hooper, a Terrier mix, and Frankie, a Boxer mix. We walk our dogs a mile and a half every morning through the park, through the neighborhood, and around Crocker Village, and oftentimes take them to Land Park for a walk also. When I first moved to Curtis Park years ago, I would take my Golden Retriever, Borgia, to the Sierra Two Green in the early mornings so she could socialize and run with other dogs. It was a great experience for her, and I found some great company with the dog owners who were there to exercise and supervise their dogs. I am very saddened by what has happened over the last couple of years in our neighborhood. The issues that have arisen around the longstanding agreement that our neighborhood had with the city have torn our neighborhood apart. I never thought something like this could happen in our little community, and it has created so much animosity and division. I am not sure we will ever be the same neighborhood again. While I would love to see the clock turned back to a pre-COVID time when the Sierra Two Green was not overrun by dogs, many of whom were from other neighborhoods, I don't believe that that is a realistic option. And I think it is disingenuous for common ground and dog acts to say that they will now obey the terms of the original agreement when they have failed to do so for two years. I believe the better solution would be to develop a true dog park in Land Park where neighbors from the surrounding communities can exercise their dogs. There's plenty of available parking around Land Park in the early mornings.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Eric Fay, Joe Flores, Madeline Gleppi.
Hi, Mayor Steinberg. Hi, Councilmember Jennings and the rest of the council. My name's Eric Fay. I'm a resident at Curtis Park, and I just wanted to say that I and my Golden Retriever both absolutely support the establishment of a fund that would look into creating a dog park in Land Park or expanding a dog park in the Belle Coolidge location. I think that would build beautifully on the report that the city has created and that was so wonderfully described by Ms. Beecham. And that's it. Thank you very much for listening. Last thing, I want to say thank you to the YPSY staff and Councilmember Jennings staff for all the work they've put into this in the last 14 months. It can't have been fun. See ya.
Thank you for your comments. Joe Flores, Madeline Gleppi, then Richard Mills.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Joe Flores. Good evening, Councilmember Jennings. I'm here tonight to say thank you to YPSY staff. I am the District Seven Parks Commissioner, and I know how hard the staff has worked on this particular item. And it's not just the E-team, it's the planning team, it's the maintenance team, it's the park rangers, it's the Sierra Two staff, it's everybody that has touched this item from YPSY staff, that they're great public servants, that they have shown the professionalism that they have shown on this item, the amount of bandwidth, time, effort, energy on this item. So, I always use my platform wherever I go, and I always big up YPSY staff. So, I just, in tonight's item, I don't want that to be lost. I know a lot of people have congratulated YPSY staff. And then there also have been comments that have not congratulated YPSY staff. But, you know, but I hope that all the neighbors, you know, YPSY staff, there is no taking sides on an item like this from their perspective. They're just doing the public service work, right? And then I hope the neighbors also realize, whichever side they land on an issue like this, that they keep this park energy up come budget time, right? They keep this up, and then we need more rangers out there. We need more maintenance staff out there. So, come budget time, send those same emails to City Council for the resources needed and the resources allocated to maintain the high level of service that these staff members do do for the city. We have some of the great parks here in this region that we need, we need more staff, more resources to have more items like this. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Madeline Gleppi, Richard Mills, Trish Davie.
Good afternoon, Mayor Steinberg, City Council members and staff. My name is Madeline Jelpe, and I live in Curtis Park. Today, I come to you as a concerned citizen. We live in difficult times. As the federal government is allocating millions of dollars to fight an epidemic of loneliness that has persisted after the pandemic, I fear that a beloved fixture, the Sierra Two Green, which has built invaluable community and connections in our Curtis Park neighborhood, is being dismantled and replaced with an option that is not viable for many of us. I want to highlight how rare it is in this world for people to organically connect and meet their neighbors. This is especially rare for people who don't have families, for people who work from home, for retired or elderly people, or folks with disabilities. We appreciate the city putting energy into building a dog park at Land Park, but it's not a solution to replace our neighborhood dog park. Curtis Park needs its own dog park. There's a high demand for a walkable park in the area. An unintended consequence of implementing a park at William B. Land is that you will see more off-leash dogs in Curtis Park because of that high demand for a walkable park. And I can tell you that as a dog owner who utilizes the Sierra Two Green, I can't use the solution provided by the city. An unleashed park next to two of the busiest roads that's an hour walk from my Curtis Park home is not a safe or reasonable replacement. And yes, this is an equity issue, but it's not against families. A decision to remove the dog park from Curtis Park will overwhelmingly impact people who are elderly and have mobility issues. These are people who are being kicked out of a place they have used daily, sometimes twice daily for years. And I would sit down and have coffee with anyone who disagrees with having a dog park in Curtis Park. I believe we can work together and come up with a shared solution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Richard Mills, Trish Davie, Kim Lundquist, Kristen Smith.
Honorable members of council, my name is Richard Mills. First, I would like to say I've read the letter that you've received from Common Ground, and I fully support its findings and its requests. I have lived in Curtis Park over 40 years and passed Curtis Park hundreds of times. By far, the most frequent visitors to the park are many happy dogs romping with each other and their human companions, including me. I will focus on one issue, the consistent pattern of decisions made by the Parks Department without public engagement, transparency, or accountability. For example, for the past year, Sierra Two was closed off to off-leash use for dogs. It was reopened with a confining fence, then further restricted by moving the fence, all without prior notification or public input. In July, a vote was conducted by the Parks Department to vote on eight options that the public had no input in developing. Over four months lapsed before the final tally was released only six days ago. Why such a delay? I wrote a letter to the Parks Department and my council representative in July. I never received an acknowledgement, let alone a reply to my questions. Now, Item Six suddenly appears only six days ago, also without public input or prior public notice. A pilot dog park might be a good idea, but why not an open process to decide where and how it should be designed? We are willing to look for compromise solutions, but where is the opportunity to gage in those conversations? This culture of secrecy must change. The council needs to provide the leadership to mandate a new ethic for the Parks Department, transparency, accountability, and true public engagement. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Trish Davie, Kim Lundquist, Kristen Smith, then Bill Hoover.
Good evening, council members and the good mayor. I'm just going to speak extemporaneously. One, we think this, we appreciate that you took this off consent. We would like a commitment, which it sounds like you're willing to do, Mr. Jennings, to have this issue more fully vetted through the Curtis Park community with a report back and a timeframe, and a commitment to work with our whole neighborhood, all of Curtis Park. Yes, you met with some residents of Curtis Park, some neighbors of Sierra Two, but I can tell you there are neighbors on 25th, Castro, Highland, all the other streets that connect with that park who were never contacted by the staff and had no input, and they have joined common ground. These are neighbors, very much like others, who live right next to the park. Well, number one. Number two, shout out to Joe Flores for supporting Parks and the budgeting for the parks. Number three, shout out to park staff. Public service is hard, however. You only had two public processes, and they were not very meaningful, and you didn't even acknowledge the results. The results of the open house held in July were finally released just last week, and the people who support the park in Curtis Park, or Sierra Two was the one option we had in Curtis Park, more than double, when you deduct the ones that don't want it there, it's more than double the second-most preferred park, which was Land Park Three. So, if you take the net positive votes from the open house, I have the results right here if anybody wants to do the math, but trust me on this, it is like two or three times more people who support a park at Sierra Two or in Curtis Park than in Land Park. Be that as it may, Land Park needs a dog park too. You should work with the community association and with the neighbors there. But please, don't run them through this kind of process that we went through in our little neighborhood.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Thank you for your comments. Kim Lundquist, Kristen Smith, Bill Hoover, then Jeannie Rosebrock.
Thank you for taking, again, my name is Kim Lundquist, and thank you for taking it off of consent for today. Moving forward, I urge you to please ensure that there is increased community engagement and transparency in the decision-making processes regarding this issue. I would like for the city and YPSY to have the opportunity to convince me that this is not some rigged, manipulated process based on political gains, backed ordeals, and elitism. I also realize that people generally approach you with problems, so I would like to offer the following common sense suggestions. If you return Sierra Two Green to its former multi-use status, except for signage, there's no cost in that. The costly ranger services responding to off-leash dog calls would be reduced to midday hours, resulting in resource and monetary savings. Multi-use would keep the Sierra Two soccer field and allow room for an additional soccer field in Land Park. If Land Park has enough unused space for another dog park, there must be enough room for another soccer field. Soccer fields don't need fencing, so there should be additional monetary savings which could then be used to enhance their existing dog parks. Or I think even better, I would use, if it was me, I would use that savings to improve parks in underserved areas rather than focusing on two of the most privileged and affluent neighborhoods in Sacramento. Nearby Oak Park has never been mentioned as a location for anything in any of these discussions. I can only assume its lack of consideration is because of deficits. With the money saved at Sierra Two Green and Land Park, I would funnel those resources to at least begin to address whatever deficits my Oak Park neighbors might need. And basically, you know, I hope you guys will do something to regain some of the trust that's been lost in our neighborhood by maybe not all of the neighbors, but a good many of them. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I have seven more speakers. Kirsten Smith, Bill Hoover, Jeannie Rosebrock.
Thank you for your time tonight. Appreciate it. I'm really excited to see that you're looking at a pilot program. These are called DOLAs. We introduced Councilman Jennings to the concept not some time ago of a dog off-leash area. In a lot of cities, these are shared usage. In some places where we have a very small area, they're done as shared time. We had this pilot program. It ran for almost 30 years. Until COVID, things were going pretty well. Not to say that there was never a stray dog ever in that park. Certainly, in any park you go to, you may see that from time to time, but the majority of people stuck to the hours, and it worked very, very well. It's a neighborhood park. It has some fencing because it used to be a school ground. In some ways, that's the ideal place to put a DOLA, because you already have the sidewalks protected from a friendly, overly friendly dog that might run up to somebody walking on the sidewalk. You've already got some of that built in. So, in a lot of ways, it's really perfect for that. The distance from the houses, I can tell you that people congregate in the middle of the field where they put the temporary. Dog park was right next to people's houses, so that was sort of a built-in problem. I'd also like to just point out that the demographics in Curtis Park, if this is a neighborhood park serving our neighborhood, demographics are a lot of older people, a lot of people with dogs. On my street, there are two lovely new families that each have one child. We have eight dogs on my street, even if only half of those people use an open area to throw a ball. I'd like to remind everyone that what we're asking for is just a few hours. We're asking for seven to nine in the morning, something like that, where people could go out, throw a frisbee, and then be, you know, just be off-leash. out, throw a frisbee, and then be, you know, just be off-leash for that long. We're really not talking about more than that. Also, quickly, I'd like to point out Google and Yelp put it on as a dog park.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Bill Hoover, Jeanne Rosebrock, then Matthew Royal.
Good evening, fellows, Sacramentoans. My name is Bill Hoover. I am the president of Sierra Curtis Neighborhood Association. First, I want to recognize Mayor Steinberg. I haven't seen you in a long time. And thank you for, Councilman Jennings, for having this matter brought forward. Special thanks to Jackie Beecham and her staff for extremely hard work that they've conducted over a period of time. I will state that this has been an incredibly trying experience for our neighborhood, and I say that as serving for president for, this is my fourth year. My big thing is, when we talk about parks, I'm in support of Item Six mainly because it recognizes the nature of dog parks. Whether it's a neighborhood park, a community park, or a regional park, it's a public park. So despite the service areas that are intended by those ratings, it's a public park, and if people with dogs, for example, or anyone for them, it can't be denied use. Now, this was made very clear to me when this issue really came up, in that you went to a dog park site, and Sierra Two Park was given a five-star rating as a dog park. And this was when you go to the city site and find out it's not a dog park. So this kind of tells you that the idea of a regional center is open more broadly to more people. When you get into a neighborhood park or a community park, it's not limited to the service area. Anybody in the city can come there and use it. And they do, and they did. So my point is, we can talk about a lot of things, and I've heard a lot of comments about the process. The process has been long and trying, but it's been fair as far as I can tell. I think the only thing I would say and comment about the reference to the turnout at these various forums and the surveys is that it wasn't limited to Curtis Park residents, even though we were talking about a park, a dog park in Curtis Park. So I encourage you to support Item Six.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Jeanne Rosebrock, Matthew Royal, Bruce Perini.
Hello, I'm Jeanne Rosebrock. I am a relatively new member of the Curtis Park neighborhood. I only have lived there for 12 years. I am that retired elderly person that many people have referred to, and I never met any of my neighbors until I started taking my dog to the dog park. And I have made wonderful friends there. It has just been wonderful. And the day that I saw the lock on the park, I just, my heart broke. I have been involved with the Common Ground Organization. We have tried to contact the Parks District and Mayor Jennings, and, sorry, Councilman Jennings, and we get no response. As many people have said, we had an open house in July. We were offered many options. We had no input into those options. We didn't know what we were going to get when we went to the meeting. And we only just got the response six days ago. And then we were told it was done, that we wouldn't get what we wanted. I strongly oppose this item, and I want my dog park back.
Thank you for your comments. Matthew Royal.
One more thing. I live a half a block from Sierra Two, and I have been able to walk my dog there every day. He's happy, I'm happy. I'm not going to be able to walk to Land Park.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Matthew Royal, Bruce Perini, Stephen Nickel, then Eldon Lewis will be our final speaker.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Royal. Thank you to Representative Jennings and the city council on this issue. I know it's taken up a lot of time. Thank you also to Director Beecham for all of the work that's been done so far. I am opposed to Number Six, not because I'm against studying a new dog park in Land Park, I am against the premature end of the community engagement process that YIPSY outlined to us at their open house. They told us this wasn't a final vote, this was simply to start the conversation. So the style of voting that we used was called DOT voting. It's fantastic as a facilitation tool. It creates a sense of engagement when you have a large number of stakeholders with a lot of different views. It, however, is not appropriate as a mechanism for choosing the final location of a dog park. Methodologically, it's been criticized for giving confusing or false results, and I think it's creating a strong sense of disenfranchisement using that mechanism for picking this location. In the community, rejecting overwhelmingly controversial but popular locations such as Sierra Two or Curtis Park, it's a premature end to the collaborative process. And so I would request that we continue with the process that was originally outlined so that everybody can feel heard, that we have a good number of representatives from lots of different perspectives, dog organizations, sports organizations, organizations with family. We've had a listening session in the community already. People sound reasonable, they're ready for compromise, and we just need a little bit of guidance and leadership in that process. So overall, yes, controversial. I live near the park. I have two small dogs myself, who they consider themselves people, so they're not interested in a dog park, but I'm very interested in making sure that we can go through the process and maintain some harmony, make sure that we have some sort of shared use for this space as we have in the past.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Bruce Perini, then Stefan Nickel, then Eldon Lewis.
Thank you for having me here to speak, Mayor Steinberg and the council members. I have lived in Curtis Park for 35 years, about a half a block from the Sierra Two, and I have seen that after the pandemic, that's when the problem really got exacerbated by having so many people from various parts of the city come over and use the park. I want to thank Councilman Jennings and Director Jackie Beecham for the hard work and the difficult work of that report that I think is pretty complete. For me, it seems pretty evident that the Sierra Two park is too small, too near houses, and there's no parking really except on the street, on our streets. Land Park seems like a no-brainer to me, and it's got everything. I just want to make one observation, one last observation, that it hasn't been brought up, and that is, when you read the comments against or opposing this proposal, that is people who want to have a dog park at Sierra Two, the content comes off very strongly as a social connection with other people, and I honor that. That's entirely estimable that people find that and search for that. But you know something? They can have that. You can bring your dog on a leash to any city park, including Sierra Two, and you can continue to maintain that social contact that's so important to you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Stefan Nickel, then Eldon Lewis.
Sorry, I'm slow, but I get there. Thank you to the council for allowing us to speak tonight. This is a very emotional topic for a lot of us. I've lived in Curtis Park for over 35 years. I've gone through, oh, I don't know, I'm on our fifth Golden Retriever that has used that park. It's been a very big part of our lives. It's very true that everything seemed to have changed once the pandemic hit. We had an influx of people from all over town, and a lot of them were working from home, and a lot of them went there at noon to walk their dogs because that's when they One of the interesting things about that was that at that point in time, a lot of that time, the playgrounds were actually closed. Kids weren't even allowed to use those playgrounds, so people were actually using the park. And the basketball courts were even closed down at some points in time. So the park was getting some use, whether it was legitimate or not. And a lot of people socialized, and people from all over town got to know each other. It was actually a very lovely thing. One of the things I'd like to say is that I support the research of a new dog park in Land Park. They deserve one, but I want to make sure that we're not left out of this mix in Curtis Park. That's been a huge part of our lives for over 30 years, and something that we will miss terribly once, you know, now that this thing is closed. I'd like to say that over, we would love to see the results that say that this was a failed experiment. We've been told it's a failed experiment, but we have seen no results citing that. The process involved in all of these surveys was just sort of ridiculous, and I'd say that with all, you know, respect for YIPSY.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Eldon Lewis.
Thank you for your comments.
Our final speaker on this item is Eldon Lewis.
I moved to Curtis Park seven years ago. I live on 25th Street. I look out my front door to the center of the soccer field. Somewhere tonight in between all this is the truth, and it's in the middle. I've looked out there and watched the people come early in the morning to walk their dogs, and they leave usually eight o'clock or so. There are no youths out there. They're being bitten or chased by these dogs. These dogs are pets. They sleep on my bed, they play with my grandkids. They're not vicious. I look out there now, and the park being closed, no one's there. Talk about it's a kid's park, they're not there. There's no one out there playing around. Dogs are not. So I guess my point is this, is that I see the people walk there with their dogs on leash. They take them in there, take them off-leash, they throw the ball, they chase back and forth, 10, 15, 20 minutes, back on the leash, they walk home. I don't think there's anything wrong with having that every morning and every evening. After they get off work, they bring their dogs out there again. No one has come to 25th Street and asked me what I thought or what I saw, and I see it 365. I'm there every day looking out. I'm retired. And I just feel like that we need to give more opportunity to discuss this because it's going to hurt Curtis Park, all the people there with dogs that walk, that cannot get to any other area. Sierra Two is a wonderful park, and we love the soccer. We love the soccer, and even though it brings 100 cars going in and out, you know, for hours on the game days for three months, then they leave, there's no kids, there's no dogs, there's nothing going on out there except complaints by some of the neighbors pushing soccer. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mary, have no more public comment on this item.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Thank you to the members of the public that came out tonight to give testimony on this very important item. Councilmember Jennings?
If no other council members have any comments?
I could speak after you, but I want to hear your direction.
I just want, you want to speak before?
No, I'll speak after you. Yeah.
Vice Mayor?
I'll just say, you know, briefly, a comment here first. I want to thank everyone for coming out here. I know I've spoken to many folks who've reached out to me who live in Curtis Park, and one of the things that the big takeaways here is still, you know, the competition we have over space. I mean, not only just dog parks versus soccer field, but even when it comes to soccer field on soccer field and our leagues trying to be able to manage that. And it goes to, I think, the challenges that we still have in meeting the overall parks and open space needs. So one, I do take, you know, Councilmember Jennings at his word that he's going to look at a process to work with folks here, but I think that there's a bigger conversation that we're looking at on the council dais of how we better make sure that we have open spaces for folks, to achieve folks. And I know we're going to have some of those discussions, particularly to make sure that there's equity involved in other parts of the city where, you know, we don't even have the question of whether there's one open space of a dog park or a soccer field, and making sure that those happen. So with that, again, I want to thank our park staff and Councilmember Jennings' staff for this, and I understand that there's going to be a continued community process with the Curtis Park community and the Land Park community. With that, thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so do you want me to say a couple of words?
Please.
Yeah, no, Councilman Jennings, I just want to thank you, you and your team, and the YIPSY staff for really important community engagement, and I know... Okay, we don't have people shouting out from the audience. Everyone who signed up had a chance to speak, and I ask that you respect the civil discourse of the chamber. There are a lot of people coming here who don't. I'm asking you to do so. Don't shut out again, or else I'm going to ask you to leave. I'd like to finish what I have to say. No public outreach process is perfect, but I note a couple of things about this report and the discussion. One is that the YIPSY staff is going to continue to consider Curtis Park as a potential site for a permanent dog park, along with the site in Land Park. And so it's still an open question and open for continued participation and public engagement, not just in the community, but ultimately at the staff level and also at this dais. So this is not the end of the discussion, it's the beginning of this discussion. And I know Councilmember Jennings and YIPSY have a tough choice here in terms of recommendations, but frankly, that's what governing is about. There is no question that people and families have used and loved this space with and for their dogs, and that history needs to be respected. And at the same time, when you have 311, 311 calls between September of 2022 and October of 2023, over half of them complaining about off-leash incidents, and you have other uses involving families and kids, there are choices to make. And so the final choice has not been made, but I think continue to engage and help your elected representatives and your professional city team come to the best conclusion we can that will elevate the experience of dog owners and the experience for dogs, and do that in a way that is compatible with the other uses that go on not only at Sierra Two, but in the other parks in our city. So I just want to commend you and commend YIPSY for a thorough and thoughtful analysis, even if it isn't perfect, because it's a choice. Councilman Jennings?
Thank you, Mayor. And just one last thing. Councilmember Jay Chenier, who was in charge of the Curtis Park area, is in the chamber, and I would love for him to come down and say hello and maybe have a word or two.
Two minutes.
Councilmember Chenier, would you do us the honor?
I'll have to next item.
He's in the next item.
So my staff, they'll go crazy because they gave me this great, long set of speaking points that they wanted me to speak to, and I don't feel that I need to do that. What I do need to do is be very clear with each one of you who came here to speak tonight, and thank you for taking time out of your day to come speak your piece. And I want to let you know that I heard you loud and clear. My staff heard you, this entire council heard you. I also want to take this time to thank YIPSY and Director Beecham for the work that they've done in this whole process. And none of these processes are perfect, but we are moving in the right direction to try to figure out what is needed in order to be able to serve the community. I want to let you know that I heard you very clearly, Mr. Stevenson, on the Del Rio Trail, something that hadn't come up before, but wonderful option. I want to let you know that we will do more open houses. I want to let you know that we will have a design process, and we will be very transparent. We will increase community engagement. We will not play political games with you. We will not do backdoor deals. We will regain your trust by working with you. You are a part of the solution, an equal part of the solution, and our work has just begun. So we will look at Curtis Park first. I heard you clearly. So we will look at Curtis Park first, I heard you clearly, even over Land Park, because you want a dog park in Curtis Park. If we can come to a solution that that works, it's one that we will move forward because it's what the people said they want. So I just want to let you know to everyone who came here to speak, and I want you to take the word back to everyone who didn't come here, we heard you loud and clear. And what we do now will determine what will happen in our neighborhood that we love so much. But it is very clear to me that this neighborhood park is not the place for a dog park. It was clear back in 2001, when the dog training facility was first put up in front of us, that it was not a dog park. It's in all of the agreements that I didn't read tonight. And in 2023, after a trial that we tried to see if we could make it work, it has become clear that it does not work. And so our option is to look for other places, and that's something we will do together. So I'd like to, I'd like to recommend that we adopt the resolution of establishing a new capital improvement project for the Land Park and Curtis Park project, authorizing YIPSY to research and pilot designated area for an unfenced, off-leash dog park.
Well, I, I didn't know whether to go first or after, but I, I really wanted to go after you, Councilmember Jennings, because I'm really honored to take your, your lead on this. I represent a portion of Curtis Park between Franklin Boulevard and Highway 99. But I think probably more importantly, I'm a user of the dog park. I think many of you have probably seen me there with my dog, Mina. And, you know, it's, it's been, I've had a lot of tough conversations with neighbors and it's been, you know, just a tough conversation overall. And I'm really very appreciative of our staff, YIPSY staff, Jackie Beecham and Councilmember Jennings, who have led with their heart, have listened, and will continue to do so. This is, this is the beginning, not the end. There's, there's still a lot of conversations to be had. There's still a lot of different places that we are, we are looking into. And I just really appreciate all the, the heart work that you've put into this, Councilmember Jennings. So really, really glad to take your lead and happy to second.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion and second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained. That motion passes. Thank you. Again, not the end of the discussion. Thank you very much, everybody. We now move to the formal part of the, the public hearings tonight and the discussion calendar. The first public hearing, only public hearing, is the Marisol Village Block A Tefra Hearing. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Whitney Hinton, Program Manager with SHRA. In October of 2020, council approved the issuance of mortgage revenue bonds for the development of Marisol Village Block A project. In addition, a Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act public hearing was held. Since then, the project has been constructed and is now fully occupied. The next and final step of project financing is to pay off construction portion of the loan and convert it to permanent financing. Due to the length of time that has lapsed since the bond issuance, bond council has advised SHRA staff that a re-Tefra is required to comply with relevant sections of the internal revenue code. There are no other changes to the financial structure of the project as initially approved by council in 2020, and staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
Very good. So this sounds like a formality. Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yeah, I want to thank you all for your work on this, open and close the public hearing and move the item. Thank you.
Do we have public testimony, Madam Clerk?
Mary, have no more, no speakers on this item.
Okay, very, very easy. Thank you so much. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstained. Easiest hearing we've ever had. Love it. Okay.
Thank you. And Mayor, to confirm, Councilmember Valenzuela opened and closed the public hearing and made a motion, and Councilmember Jennings seconded that. Is that accurate?
That's the way I recall it.
Thank you.
It was somebody on my left side. Okay. All right. We now move to the discussion calendar, which is item 28. Is there a stat presentation? As I understand, this Councilmember Kaplan, as the Chair of PNP, was going to start this hearing, and we will go from there.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an item before you of which kind of two proposals in, in a council discussion, amending resolution 2230387. That was put in by Councilmember Telemontes and I. So colleagues before you is a resolution by Councilmember Telemontes and I to expand the reach of the youth voice in Sacramento. Also included is the implementation of two goals of the Sacramento Youth Commission in their annual work plan. I want to keep this simple. You have our plan before you. It's gone through PNP. And I apologize if a PowerPoint was expected, but I will tell you our plan in three points verbally. The first two are a request from our Sacramento Youth Commission. The first is to make the Sacramento Youth Commission the official youth voice of the city. Second, they requested the expansion of the Aggie Square Public Financing Authority to include a youth voice. And finally, the implementation of adding a youth seat to every board and commission in Sacramento, where they sit at the dais of the board and commission and have an actual vote on policies that will come forward to council is part of this. This is expanding the voting power and voice of youth on each board and commission in our city beyond the Sacramento Youth Commission. Tonight, as we talk about our youth, this brings up a lot of emotion about how we feel one way or another. What we decide as a council today is a policy decision. And it's okay if we disagree on direction we should take in regards to our youth. That is democracy. Today is my hope that we can agree to disagree with kindness on policy and not make this a personal jab about where our policy disagreements may be. What you might hear from others who disagree with Councilmember Telemontes and my proposal is, we don't support youth, we are afraid of youth voices, we are removing the power of young adults to have a voice. These are examples of rhetoric and comments said to inflame the decision before us at council night, and that's not what this conversation is about. If anybody claims anybody on this council doesn't support youth, well, we all know that is factually wrong. Each and every one of us up here support our youth. And the city just passed Measure L, which is to directly benefit our youth. There is no benefit to argue one council member is supportive of our youth than any other. I spent two decades, 20 years, advocating for our youth as a school board making, school board member, making a stipend of less than $4,000 a year. I have been advocating for our youth for longer than some of you have been alive. Any statement that any one of us doesn't support our youth is rhetoric, and I hope that's where we don't go to. We disagree on policy. We don't disagree on supporting youth. You're also going to hear that we might be afraid of youth voices. Again, this is factually wrong. I am a mother. I am afraid of my daughters being shot in school because our national leadership would rather protect gun manufacturers than our children. I'm afraid our system doesn't protect innocent children from violence in their home, and that many children have been abused or witnessed their mother being abused, creating lifelong trauma in their lives. As a mom, I'm afraid and worry about the mental health of our children. I saw the rapid increase of anxiety amongst our youth as a school board member for 20 years. I worry about the increase in anxiety, pressure, and suicide we are now seeing amongst our youth. These are things, as a mom, I worry about daily. You're going to hear that we're taking away the voice of the youth. At no point is any voice being diminished. In actuality, youth seats are being added with the ability to vote on every board and commission, and this is an expansion of the youth voice. We already have four youth seats on our boards and commissions, and the resolution in front of you is to officially make sure we add a youth seat to the rest of them. Our Sacramento Youth Commission is the voice of the youth, our youth in the city. Each council member has the ability to appoint two youth. It is our responsibility as leaders to listen to our youth appointees, as the commission is the collective voice of our youth throughout the city. With the Sacramento Youth Commission and adding a youth seat to each board and commission, this is meant to set up our youth, to have an official direct channel to adding and increase in knowledge of the, of what happens in our institution on council and the ability to understand how governance works in proposing policies and its impact on them. I agree with the National League of Cities, which lists all the benefits of meaningful and authentic youth engagement. The city of Sacramento does this with our Sacramento Youth Commission, with our Summer at City Hall, with our workability programs, with our teen programs, with youth leadership, funding of CBOs that benefit our youth, and I could go on. But the city of Sacramento does lead with authentic and meaningful youth engagement, and will continue to lead by passing the proposal set forth by Councilmember Telemontes and myself. So again, I hope we can disagree with kindness. And I would now like to turn this over to my colleague, Councilmember Telemontes.
Thank you. I have a lot of different points right now, but I'll wait to hear from our youth and hear your comments and after Mayor Protem's presentation. But I would just like to add that Councilmember Kaplan and I are both former school trustees. We love our youth, we care about our youth, and I spent a career as a high school counselor helping kids get to college. And this alternative proposal will increase the number of leadership positions for our youth on all the boards and commissions. And that's going to help with policymaking, with finding, becoming an expert at a subject matter, finding a mentor, and really making a difference at the commission level where a lot of our policy is crafted before it comes to council. You know, there's many times even at the planning commission where they, they take votes on items that we never get to see here at the city council. Once policy comes here, it's basically fully baked and ready for us to vote on. And one of the biggest ways that you can make a difference is through the boards and commissions. And let me be clear, I fully support youth engagement in our local government and beyond, and I see firsthand what young people are capable of, and that you're the change makers and that you're the present and the future. So the question today is about what level of engagement is appropriate for unelected community members. And the city has established formats for this, boards and commissions and committees. And so they're full of important voices, including our youth. And so I look forward to expanding on that after the presentation.
All right. Thank you. Mayor Protem, did you want to go next?
Yes. Thank you so much, Mayor. Before I begin, I actually would like to ask for our two youth to come up and present with me, because this is not Mayor Protem's actually presentation, it's actually the youth's presentation. And they're actually using me, this seat, as a way to really vocalize what they've been asking and demanding of the city. And so I actually would like to request for Leo and Kimora to come up, because they actually worked on the presentation. And before we begin, I'll just start out with some context, because really, I'm just going to hand it over to them, because they're the one that's actually fighting the fight and have been requesting for Mayor and Council to get to this moment. So as you all are aware, there are several proposals on the table today to really determine the various way that adults will allow young people to engage with city government. First, I just want to say thank you to Kimora and to Leo and to all the young people that's been calling me, texting me, emailing me, and really urging us to continue this fight. And we're really here today because you're asking for a seat literally on the dais, on this dais. Over the years, our young people have asked local governments to, that they wanted a voice and a seat at the table, not just on youth commission and/or our boards, but on the dais along with elected officials. The Youth Advisory Liaison Resolution, to provide some context, was passed in 2022, and it was our historical first step, our young people's historical first step, to really uplift, elevate, and center young people in the city. And I think all of my colleagues absolutely agree that youth are a central part of our city system, that their perspective lends a new understanding and an intimate, unique perspective of all of the proposed policies that come to council for consideration. I do just want to acknowledge that the city, our city, before I was even a city council member, has made important milestones to center youth in the city, and I want to provide some historical context. In 2017, before the majority of us were on the city council, this city council passed a citywide youth development plan approved by council that includes a core value, nothing about us without us. In 2019, our Sacramento Youth Commission was chartered. That's less than five years ago, y'all. It is 2023, and our youth commission was just commissioned five years ago. In 2020, I was not here yet, the city council and the youth commission actually held their first joint meeting. And then in 2021, youth seats were designated actually on three city adult commission. You'll hear from my colleagues with the counterproposal to expand all 14 commission, but what I want to reiterate is that what they're proposing isn't something that's new, it's something that we've already started. But I'm really excited that, you know, they want to expand it, and we should move forward fast to expand all 14 seats. And then 2022, last year, a council did pass the resolution to pass a youth advisory seat, and it was historical. And the direction was that that resolution should go to get feedback from the Sacramento Youth Commission, which happened, and then to go to PNP to actually begin the implementation. But two of my colleagues did present a counterproposal. They did halt it in the PNP committee and provided the counterproposal that I heard from Councilwoman Kaplan. So today, you have two proposals on the table, but something I want to share is that both proposals that are on the table doesn't have to be mutually exclusive. And we actually, as a city council, should find ways and opportunities to actually elevate youth voices at all levels of policymaking and decision-making in government. We can't say we value youth voice without giving them a seat at the table, and young people are asking for a seat on the dais. And just a reminder for folks, it's not a voting member, it's a liaison. So we're back here again, young people, we're back here again to take another vote and hopefully that this council will provide direction. Again, I just, also just want to reiterate that the city of Sacramento has come a long way to really center young people in the city. And today, you're going to hear from our two incredible young folks who are actually on our commission, who actually took it upon themselves to incorporate the Sacramento Youth Commission's recommendation that was provided to PNP, which is the recommended red line that we provided today. And with that, I'm looking forward to the discussion with my colleagues, with our two amazing youth leaders here in Sacramento. And I'd like to introduce Leo, the Chair of the Youth Commission, and Kimora, my District Eight Youth Commissioner, to introduce themselves and present just high level what our recommendation and amendment to the resolution would be. And with that, I'll hand it over to Kimora.
All right. Do I use this little pointer thing, or?
Yep.
I'm gonna try my best. Can I do that? Oh, duh. Okay. Hi, my name is Kimora Morley. I am a youth commissioner of the city of Sacramento in District Eight with Councilwoman Myveng's office, but I am here as a community member who also happens to be a young person. Youth ages 16 to 24 make up 31% of the city of Sacramento, but we are 100% of the future. There are various benefits of authentic and meaningful youth engagement in city governance, which includes budget savings and revenue generation, increased support for city initiatives, improved policies and programs for youth, identification as a youth-friendly community and improved indicators of well-being amongst our youth. These are a few indicators that the Youth Advisory Liaison position engages youth into government work. Once one youth begins participating in politics, it encourages fellow youth to be more involved. Okay. The Youth Advisory Liaison position provides a direct channel to and institutionalizes the ability of city councils to better understand proposed policies, impact its young people and the future adult citizens of the city. Sorry, I'm trying to find my place. The Youth Advisory Liaison seat is not intended to represent the entire population of youth individual identity in Sacramento, but it provides insight on a commonly shared youth experience in this generation, which is important in this specific generation as legislative decisions continue to be made. I would like to note that 18-year-olds have the ability to run for office. Therefore, as stated in our amended proposal, 16 to 17 years old is a fair age range. During this term, this Youth Advisory Liaison member would serve one fiscal year. For example, if they were appointed July 1st, 2024, they would end their term June 30th, 2025. It feels weird kind of saying that, the year. And I will now pass it on to Leo Su.
Thank you, Kimora, for that introduction. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Leo Su. I am the- I am the, I am the senior at West Campus High School, and I also happen to be the Chair of the Sacramento Youth Commission. But tonight, I come to you as a community member, and my comments do not reflect the thoughts of the commission. So the Youth Advisory Liaison were to elevate a young person directly to the city council dais and provide them with opportunities to provide real-time input on time-sensitive policy discussions. As Councilwoman Myveng said already, this is a non-voting member, but they would still be provided with the same staff reports on agenda items, as well as be invited to the same staff briefings on these agenda items. This young person would be excluded from closed sessions, classified judicial proceedings, and personnel labor matters. This current amendment that you all are entertaining today has the city council direct the city clerk to implement the Youth Advisory Liaison position with an application process that mirrors the current application process of city boards and commissioners. Our new amendment has the position to alternate annually between districts one through four and districts five through eight, and requires the city clerk to keep tally of the previous districts of appointees to the Youth Advisory Liaison. The city clerk will also collaborate with the youth commission to tailor outreach to districts who have not yet had a representative to this position. The youth commission will collaborate with the city clerk in outreach and will be presented with information about applicants to inform their recommendation about the Youth Advisory Liaison to the city council. By the end, the city council will still have the final say on the appointment. This new amendment also establishes a standing item for the Youth Advisory Liaison at all Sacramento Youth Commission meetings, or Sacramento Youth Commission business meetings, which would allow the Youth Advisory Liaison to report to the commission about items that have been heard at council that it thinks that the youth commission should be aware of, as well as solicit the youth commission's feedback on upcoming items at council, so that the Youth Advisory Liaison's comments and recommendations at council may better reflect the diverse experiences of Sacramento youth. This standing item creates, frequently connects the youth commission with the city council and enhances the collaboration between the city's group of youth leaders. As it is today, the youth commission is only an advisory board to the city council through a lengthy process, and we need to be asked for our input before we're able to provide any. This means that the commission's ability to affect, to influence policy discussions is extremely limited. For example, earlier this year, the youth commission was asked to make recommendations to council about the Youth Advisory Liaison. You can find these recommendations in the 2023-2024 Sacramento Youth Commission Annual Report. And today, it is still unclear to me if those recommendations were seriously considered. I would have liked to hear back from council before counterproposals were approved, and to open a dialogue between the youth commission and the city council about this position. That is why I am here today, asking you to directly implement this position and elevate Sacramento youth directly to the dais. Key takeaways: the Youth Advisory Liaison elevates a youth voice directly to the dais to provide real-time input on time-sensitive policy discussions. It is a non-voting member for a 16- to 17-year-old youth, which means that they cannot run for office, cannot run for council office yet, but it does not mean that they do not have rich lived experiences that can contribute to the policy discussions at council to solve Sacramento's most pressing issues. The decreased term length from the previous, previous proposal from two years to one year provides more frequent opportunities for Sacramento youth to engage in local government. And the Sacramento Youth Commission will collaborate with the city clerk in outreach, make a recommendation to the city council, but the city council will have the final say in the appointment of this position. Thank you again, I'm very grateful for this opportunity to do that in front of you tonight, and I'll pass it back to Councilmember Veng.
Thanks, Leo, appreciate the PowerPoint job. Kimora shared earlier, I know that she has to step out real quick. Young people make up 30% of our city, but 100% of our future. Every decision we make on this dais has an impact on them and their future. I truly am a believer that when we have a young person up here on the dais, it makes our city better, it makes us a better governing body. And with that, Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions from my colleagues, but we might, just because we have young folks here, perhaps we can do public comment and then happy to engage in dialogue and debate.
Yeah, I think what we should do is hear from the public, hear the public testimony, and then we should have a debate and discussion among our colleagues and prospective motions and make some decisions. Let's hear from the public first.
Thank you, Mayor. I have 33 speakers on this item. I know I have some new guests in chambers, so I want to remind you that this meeting is being video streamed and can be viewed live or later on the city's website. Members of the public who wish to address the council should complete a speaker slip, which can be found at the back of the room. And speaker slips do need to be turned in to the clerk prior to the beginning of each item. Speakers, we have two minutes to address the council, and that timer is on the screen behind me, so that everyone has the opportunity to address the council. Members of the public are asked to observe the rules of decorum. The council rules of procedure outline decorum expected in chambers. It can be found on our website, it copies at the back of the room, and is summarized on the back of the speaker slip. For instance, use of swear words, speaking from the audience, physically threatening conduct, and displays of disrespect or discourage. The presiding officer will request that a person cease any disruptive conduct, and if not immediately stopped, the presiding officer will ask the person to leave the room. And parking validations are available from the clerk at the front of the room. So I'm going to call off a few names. Again, we have 33. If you want to line up in the middle aisle, that would be appreciated. The first is Lauren Pryor, Isaac Gonzalez, Nick Solis, Radha Kahoon.
Do I just start?
Please proceed.
Oh, fantastic. Good evening, council, Vice Mayor Gera. Lauren Pryor with Black Youth Leadership Project. I am here in support of the second, I guess, amended, I don't know what y'all are doing in here, the second one presented by Vice Mayor, but I heard, not Vice Mayor, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Veng. What I heard was that the first proposal could actually be rolled into the second proposal, and we can have 14 kids on commissions and then have their representatives sitting right here to make sure their voice is heard. That's what I heard. What I'm concerned about is we always talk to youth about civic engagement, getting involved civically, and when they want to, they are shut down. The best teacher is hands-on experience. That's the best teacher. We can tell them all day, every day, how policies are run, how things should go, but unless they can actually experience it and take it back to their schools, we're doing them a disservice. So I want the adults in the room to provide a safe space for these kids, become an adult ally. What that means is we need to move our egos out of the way, and we need to make space for the next generation. She just told you they were 100% of your future? Let's engage them now, because they're going to be making decisions on where to put us when it's that time. The last thing I would say is compensation. I know we had a discussion about it on the podcast, there needs to be some discussion about the proposed compensation, but please don't let that be a deterrent to put in this bridge that can actually connect you to the next generation. Let's get on the discussion of what we need to discuss, and let's not limit possibilities for our babies. I don't, I, look, what I heard someone say was that this is a non-elected member, you dang skip, they can't even vote yet, but they can have a voice and they can tell you what they're thinking, so let's not, let's make it easier for them.
Thank you for your comments. Isaac Gonzalez, Nick Solis, Radha Kahoon, and Vanessa Reyes.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, City Council. Isaac Gonzalez, longtime resident of Tahoe Park, lifelong resident of the city of Sacramento. I want to thank Councilmember Kaplan and Telemontes for the setting this evening and talking about, you know, policy and our differences and respectful dialogue. And I want to thank Mayor Protem Veng for her passion on this issue, and I want to just give a shout out to former Councilmember, Sheneer is here this evening as well. On the Tahoe Park Neighborhood Association, we added a youth board member, and we couldn't have been more, more lucky to do so, and it can have benefited us more. It's an opportunity to really hear from a perspective that you just don't get. I love the idea of adding to the commissioners. As a commissioner myself, I would love to have a youth member of the Act of Transportation Commission. So let's do that and, I mean, I didn't hear a reason why we couldn't do that and not do this. I actually haven't heard a reason why tonight from this side of the room why we couldn't do this, so I'm really glad to hear that we have the desire to expand so much. As a former poor kid from Medivu, I will tell you through the equity lens that the city is working now, I am sure that whatever representative ends up here will be from one of our disadvantaged communities. And I cannot tell you enough how much, as an older person, we just do not understand what these kids are going through at all. And they are the only ones that can share that with us. So I think we have a really good opportunity to be bold in the city of Sacramento, to be one of the first cities, if not the first city to ever do this. And I full-heartedly hope that we find a compromise that not only expands it for the commissioners, but finds us with the young person up here as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Nick Solis, then Radha Kahoon, Vanessa Reyes, then Marbella Sala.
Good evening, council. Thank you for considering such a critical item. My name is Nick Solis. I am a former young person, and currently I represent pro-youth and families, as well as the Sacramento County Board Behavioral Youth Advisory Board. I'm here to tell you guys tonight that youth voice matters, and I'm here to actually emphasize that. Youth involvement and civic engagement for me has had a very profound experience and left a lasting impact on me as a person. In the early 2010s, I was part of the Youth and City Council Program here, and some of you might remember, primarily Steinberg and Gera over here, might remember us gathering and taking a look at speaker cards, making public comments and so on. And since then, I've facilitated and had the opportunity to overlook other youth leadership boards throughout Sacramento and its many counties. And over my observations, there are a lot of amazing youth with future forward-thinking ideas. I've seen a lot of great proposals be made, a lot of ideas be considered regarding clean energy, health resources, and so on, too many things to list here in two minutes. But I would like to speak in favor of creating the youth liaison positions, because for me, the culmination of my experiences as a young person led to the adult that I am today. And if a youth liaison position like this existed when I was a teenager, I would have been ecstatic about the opportunity to represent my peers, because youth are amazing at representing each other. Thank you all for your time, and have a wonderful night.
Thank you for your comments. Radha, then Vanessa, and Marbella Sala.
Good evening, council members. My name is Radha Johan. I represent the County Behavioral Youth Advisory Board, a resident of County District Three and City District Six. I'm here to advocate and support the Youth Advisory Liaison and alleviate some concerns that you may have regarding this position. Though, now, one issue you may have pointed out is that this position could cause stress in the youth at their age, though there are other positions like the School Board of Education who have youth members who could manage this work-life balance, showing that this is not only a possibility that these types of positions could work, but showing that these could significantly impact our community. The lived experience of youth greatly differs from generation to generation. Therefore, having a youth voice directly representing the youth population would add value to our community. Like, for me, being a part of the board myself is one significant learning process. Along with that learning process, I can give input to different ideas. For example, earlier this year, I made a policy recommendation in support of children's mental health. And with some guidance from advisors, from advisors from the city, county, the Office of Education sectors, along with intensive research, our board drafted a policy brief in support of student mental health resource and accessibility and sustainability. Our recommendations sought to ensure that our region was breaking barriers between systems to address the whole child's needs. This was present, this was presented to the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors, the Sacramento County of Education, with the intent to focus on a holistic well-being for the youth community. Now, having a youth advisory liaison could amplify impacts just like this. Thank you for your time.
Your comments. Vanessa Reyes, Marbella Sala, Anna Amara Wilson, then Lisa Stanley.
Good evening, council members. My name is Vanessa Reyes, and I'm a community member who resides in District Eight. I also serve as an adult ally and youth mentor within Sacramento City Unified School District. I'm here to express my support for the implementation of a youth advisory liaison seat. Youth carry critical voice and perspective, and it's really important that as adults, we create authentic spaces where youth are recognized as both key leaders and change makers. I want to highlight and emphasize the word authentic, because as adults, there's often a tendency to invite young people to the table simply to tokenize them and checklist that some form of outreach was done prior to finalizing decisions that really didn't include their voice in a meaningful way. Young people are not just the future leaders of tomorrow, but the leaders of today, and I urge the council members to create this position and ensure that the voices of youth are supported and actually listened to. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Marbella Sala.
I'm Marbella, and I'm a member of District Three. I'm also the president of Garland and Northgate Association, and I'm a Measure U Commissioner, but I'm not here speaking on any of their behalf, I'm here speaking as an individual. And first of all, I am a supporter of youth. I, I value their voices, but I'm opposed respectfully to having a youth sit on the dais with elected officials. And the reason for this, and I, and I understand why you would propose that, because if you're under 18, you can't vote. However, we have a very large population in this community that cannot vote, and that's our undocumented community. They don't have a voice, they cannot vote, and yet, they have a huge need in this community, and there's no, they don't sit on any commissions, there's no seats for them to express their voices, yet, they don't, they won't be allowed to sit on the dais. So I, and I know it's not popular, but that was my reason for proposing it. And not to mention, in any of the commissions, there's not a position for seniors, and we're a growing population of seniors, there's no seat specifically designated for seniors. So how do you hear from seniors and what their issues are and services? So everything else I support, I support your amendment, Councilwoman Kaplan and Councilwoman Telemontes, but not as an elected, have youth sit on the dais along with elected officials. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anya Amara Wilson, Lisa Stanley, Rosie Ramos, Anna Tuakolo.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Anaya Amara Wilson, and I am here on behalf of Black Youth Leadership Project's podcast, Black vs. the Board of Education. I would like to start off by saying that body language and speaking while public comments are happening shows a lot, when the audience noticed it. The youth advisory liaison position needs to be implemented immediately because youth and kids' voices are fundamental. I always hear adults say that they don't hear from the youth, or they don't know what we as kids need, so why take this position away, before you even implemented it? How are you preparing the youth for future roles like you all have, without giving them an opportunity to gain the needed experience? Factors like pay and the concern for how the youth may be spoken to can be negotiated and discussed. Yes, expand the board, but why at the cost of a vital position? Think about the message you all want to send to the youth and the communities you all serve. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Lisa Stanley, Rosie Ramos, Anna Tuakolo.
My name is Lisa Stanley, and I am in strong support of establishing a youth advisory liaison. This step is, this is a positive step towards engaging and involving the youth in decision-making processes. This would allow them to voice their concerns and contribute to the development of policies and programs that directly impact them and future generations. As a mother, I hear, see, and value my children and the youth I advocate for on a daily basis. Please don't throw around that word and be against having youth represented here on this council. Your actions don't match your words.
Thank you for your comments. Rosie Ramos, then Anna, then Dalving.
Good evening, council. My name is Rosie Ramos, and I'm here representing the Oak Park Neighborhood Association in District Five. I'm here to strongly support the creation of a youth liaison seat and urge our council representative to vote in favor of it. Our youth deserve a dedicated platform and, within our local government, and agree that they should be on our boards and commissions and on, and on this dais. That would really allow the opportunity to them to emphasize their perspectives. And while youth representation across various And while youth representation across various spaces is important, this is where the decisions are made. And what better way to ensure that the decisions at commissions and boards are upheld and there's accountability to them than having them, hear them here in this position? This seat could also promote knowledge and the development of skill sets to prepare them to become the next generation of leaders and to be the next powerhouse of Sacramento. I also come with personal experience in working with youth as I run a youth leadership academy in my day job. And I'm the first to say that they are so passionate and eager to take on roles in their communities, and a position like this could be that next step coming from a youth leadership academy. Our board also questioned it at the beginning of the creation of this program. And today, they are one of the biggest supporters and actively recruit for this role, and they're so happy to see this program continue to flourish. So as decision-makers and adult allies, we should create spaces for students and our young adults to create influence as well and help, they should help us make better decisions. They should help this dais make better decisions. So I encourage you all to create this youth seat at city council, include the boards and commissions, and take the step forward to ensure that youth voices are heard. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Anna Toakolo, Dow Vang, Sunshine Tau.
Good evening, mayor, council. My name is Anna Toakolo. Currently serve as the Associate Executive Director with the youth-serving nonprofit Alliance for Education Solutions, also a proud member of D2, and also proud partners of the SAC Kids First Coalition. I was here last December and I'm here again, standing in solidarity with this movement of creating a youth advisory liaison position. Because as someone who grew up here in SAC, I 100% believe that this would allow for representation of young people at the table. Many of you probably heard that saying, "It takes a village to raise a child," right? But I'd like to extend that saying a little further because sometimes when you don't fully recognize that village, that village can have the potential to kill a child, it has the potential of allowing young people to not be at the seat at the table. And so today, I'd like to pose a little challenge for our council member and mayor to think about when you were young people. At one point in your lives, you all were young people. Some of you, that was yesterday. For some of you, that was a bunch of yesterdays ago. And so I want you all to think about somewhere along your path, somebody in your village took a chance on you. They took a leap of faith on you, they gave y'all an opportunity to have the opportunities that led you to where you are today, sitting on that dais, looking at all of us today. And our ask is that you all can agree and support this resolution unanimously, giving an opportunity to young people in Sacramento to enhance youth voice by adopting this youth advisory liaison position. Because as we continue to say every single time we come up here, youth are not only just 30% of the population today, they are 100% of all of our futures, and they deserve a seat at that table. And lastly, as the Youth Development Plan states, it's not a youth-centered public comment without saying this, y'all. Nothing about us?
Without us.
Nothing about us?
Without us.
Hold on, they can't hear y'all. Nothing about us?
Without us.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Dow Vang, then Sunshine Tau, then Nicholas Mua.
Alrighty. Thank you so much, Anna. I don't know if I could top what you said, but we'll try. But good evening, Mayor Steinberg, Vice Mayor Eric, and Mayor Pro Tem Vang, members of the Sacramento City Council. My name is Dow and I'm the field organizer with Mong Innovating Politics. And I currently reside in District Three, right? I'm speaking to express my strong support for the city council to adopt a new resolution presented for by Mayor Pro Tem Vang and also both the Sacramento Youth Commissioners Leo and Kimora as well here as well. While my formative years were not spent in Sacramento, you know, I could draw parallels between my upbringing here, especially in the south side of Fresno, California to South Sacramento, right? And really, the experiences of the youth there as well too, right? Our recent community assessment survey in Sacramento reveals a narrative echoing the familiar challenges I and some of my colleagues have encountered, such as, you know, persistent housing instability, overcrowded household, getting violent and high mental health support needed, especially exacerbated by the aftermath of the pandemic. I appreciate the sentiment expressed by specifically Councilmember Rick Jennings, right? When he had asked, you know, "What are we so afraid of?" Right? And I understand that some of you may have reservations, but I firmly believe that with the collective support of you all, you could address and alleviate these concerns and support this young person to really thrive on the dais. The moment is ripe for action. I urge the city to embrace the proposed resolution. This seat ensures that youth can offer timely feedback on ongoing issues that significantly impact people's daily lives, as Leo had mentioned. Yeah, just thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Sunshine Tau, Nicholas Mua, Anson Sechow, and then Tisa Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and city council members. My name is Sunshine Tau and I'm representing Mong Innovating Politics. I've been a youth advocate for this program for two years now, and throughout this journey, I felt immensely connected to my community. While working with this program, I've overcome numerous experiences and found my passion in public speaking. I hope to inspire more youth to take advantage of pursuing these kinds of organizations to gain experience and eventually come out to the Sacramento City Hall to speak on what we need now and in the future. That's why I'm here today to convince you to vote yes on the recommendations made for the youth advisory liaison position. These recommendations will provide youth multiple opportunities to have a voice in the community and feel included with the things that we need to be informed about since it's going to be our future. We do not want to be left with the broken pieces. As a youth, I'm still experiencing the challenges the council doesn't see. As an example, I come from a low-income high school that doesn't receive enough funding for things like events, sports, and programs. Many of the clubs, sports teams, and even student classes have to set up fundraisers and sell food during food fairs to get the things that they need and want. I end up hearing numerous students complain about the amount of pricing school events are and how most of them end up choosing not to go due to the issue of money. As parents, I'm sure you wouldn't want your children distressed about their finances and upset at the fact that they have to miss one of the most important years of their lives due to financial issues. I assure you, if we make this change to give youth the chance to voice over our stories, it'll benefit them. With the youth advisory position, our youth will be surrounded by a lovable community where our voices are heard with our mayor and the city council members. This community will provide for our youth in need and to make sure none of us will have to worry about these problems in the future. Voting yes to this position will be one of the many major steps to our community has taken, so I urge you to take action and support the suggestions by the mayor Pro Tem. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Nicholas Mao. I have 20 more speakers. So Nicholas, then Anson Sechow, Tisa Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the city council. My name is Nicholas Mua and I'm a young adult with Mong Innovating Politics. I've also been a part of EBC's youth program, so I am very in tune with the power that youth hold. I'm here to speak in support of the resolution presented by both councilmember May Vang and youth commissioners Leo and Kimora. Growing up in the city of Sacramento, I've witnessed firsthand the challenges young people face in trying to thrive, particularly in the terms of economic sustainability. The minimum wage stagnant since 2016 poses a significant obstacle for youth, especially those in transitional phases. With the rising costs of daily necessities such as rent, it raises a critical question, how can transitional youth manage on a wage that barely covers rent, let alone food or expenses, or educational expenses? The inability to afford a place of our own not only hampers personal aspirations, but also has a ripple effect on the ability to fulfill cultural and familial obligations. The question arises, how do other young people in similar situations think and feel? Unfortunately, without a live platform to voice our concerns and perspectives to the city itself, we may never truly understand the collective struggles and aspirations of our generation. That is why I'm in full support of councilmember May Vang's new resolution to put the youth advisory liaison into motion, and why I urge the rest of you to also be in support of the youth advisory liaison, so that it will allow youths and young adults to be heard. Because if you are making the choices for our future, we should have a say and be heard. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor and city council members. My name is Anson Sechow and I reside in District Six. I work at Mong Innovating Politics as a community organizer for young adults, also a part of the SAC Kids First Coalition. I recommend that you all adopt the new resolutions presented earlier. When I was a high school student, my senior project was U-Mid Student Conference. This was a conference held for the Mid-Suited Sacramento region in the past to celebrate our culture and our identity. However, the school district was trying to cut the funds for transportation, which would have not allowed the conference to continue. As a part of a project back then, I spoke to the board urging them to continue that funding. I wasn't alone in this battle because I had the support of my mentors and adult allies and community back then. Now I want to give back by advocating for this youth advisory liaison position. I bring this story to you all today because I, as an adult now, am now pushing for that youth voice, but now on a larger scale. The youth advisory liaison position can now fill in those gaps from the past, and if it existed back then, then they would have been able to provide faster feedback and real-time solutions that I did not see until I had to put out my voice out there. I am here now, many years later, as someone that has come full circle to continue to support the youth and also a strong participant within my civic duties, as mentioned earlier. From speaking to the school board and to the city council now, I can tell you that all my youth experiences has affected to the present. And as an adult, I will continue to play this pivotal role in all our futures, and I hope to continue seeing this continued for lots of futures and the future that we all conceive for each other. So in conclusion, I just recommend and urge that the council adopt the new resolutions presented by Mayor Pro Tem Vang and the two youth commissioners, Kimora and Leo. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Tisa Johnson, Kao Yi Tau, Gregory Solomon Fry Jr.
Good evening to the mayor, the city council, and the rest of my neighbors. My name is Tisa Johnson, and I work with the Alliance for Education Solutions, AES for short. We're a nonprofit whose mission and values support local programming that increases the life chances of underserved youth through programs such as the Paid Youth STEM Listening Project that we did this summer in partnership with the Sacramento Mayor's Office, which culminated in an amazing youth summit at SAC State in August. Youth Voice was center stage and it was fantastic. They were so proud of themselves. Let's keep programs like that going. AES is a proud and active member of the SAC Kids First Coalition, and we stand in full solidarity with their mission, their values, and their vision for Sacramento's youth community. I would like to respectfully encourage the council members to fully support the role of youth voice in our city's policymaking. Representation matters. To ensure the individual is adequately compensated for their time and their participation, representation matters. Youth time and voices are urgently needed. Compensation is a necessity, especially in our underserved communities where they may have to pay for either a rideshare service or give money to someone for gas in order to even attend an engagement opportunity. AES and myself, as a concerned community member and Sacramento native who was raised in the underserved, yet culturally rich neighborhood of Metaview, I understand the importance of youth leadership. I attended Freeport Elementary and John Still Junior High School, and my 80-year-old mother still resides in her home of 53 years. I was shaped as a person in part through grassroots youth programs brought into my community.
If your comments, your time is complete. Our next speaker is Kao Yi Tau, then Gregory Solomon.
Hello, mayor and city council members. I'm Kao Yi Tau. I'm a resident of District Two, a representative of Mong Innovating Politics, and a member of the Sacramento Racial Equity Alliance, urging you to vote yes on the recommendations for the youth advisory liaison position set forth by the SAC Youth Commission. And I first want to address the proposal that was put forth by councilmember Kaplan and Antal Montes. Like Mayor Pro Tem Vang said, it's not mutually exclusive, and I love that talking about the youth liaison position is opening us to talk about other underserved and marginalized communities. I think that this is the right track. And at the end of the day, if this position is going to make this council stronger and more effective, then it is the right decision to move forward on this position. Because I believe that all of you believe that it is important to be bold and innovative and that business as usual is not working, and this is where the position is coming in. It's going to bring a lot of value to the council. As someone who's going to bring intersectional identities, they can give feedback in real time. And I want to underscore that just being on a commission is not the same as a live platform, a live seat at the dais. And this will impact the dynamic at the city council, but I believe it's for the better. Because I know that y'all value doing work well and in an informed way whenever possible. Our youth are poised for this advisory role because they are the ones who face the brunt of all the policies you pass, whether we're talking about housing, mental health, or jobs. But we know that they're systematically disempowered. For the Mong people, like other refugee and immigrant communities, our youth do serve as the bridge and connectors. And so I think there is this false idea that this policy is exclusive, but actually, it makes this council more inclusive and it takes us on the right track to ensuring that we are making better policies that serve all of our communities. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Gregory Solomon Fry Jr., Jose Cabrero Perez, Kamal Deep Pandra.
Good evening, council members. My name is Gregory Solomon Fry Jr. I am a part of IYT Brotherhood Committee, and I'm here to support the, the...
It's okay, take your time. You're alright.
I'm here to support the action of having a youth council member in your guys' meetings. I think this because young people, or having a young person in the, as a council member can benefit other young people as like they kind of relate to our generation and can yeah, kind of help our problems as young people being solved. So, and that's pretty much it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. You did a good job.
This is Jose Cabrero Perez, then Kamal Deep Pandra, and Draymon.
Good evening, council members. My name is Jose. I'm part of IYT. I am in favor of the youth advisory position because the youth have experience, knowledge, and ideas that are unique to their situation, which offers insights and perspectives that adults cannot. Also, in some communities, the youth makes up the majority and they are more likely to be engaged if they can relate to a youth council member. That is because it will empower the young individuals to believe in their capacity to affect positive change. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Kamal Deep, then Draymon.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Cam and I'm part of the nonprofit organization Improve Your Tomorrow. I'm in support of the youth board position because I feel that me and my peers don't really have a voice, and I think it would just give us some representation. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Draymore Edwards, then DeCawry Robinson.
Good evening, council members and mayor. My name is Draymon Edwards. I am a student at SAC State. Shout out Vice Mayor Garrett Go Hornet. Fingers up. Yes, sir. Hope you are in support of this. And I am a part of the Brotherhood Action Committee in IYT. I think there should be a youth seat on the board because we, the youth, is next up in life and want to be able to produce change for the better. Young people like myself will find it inspiring that a youth is a part of something important and in charge. We also have the knowledge and leadership to know what we want in the world, to consider other people's thoughts, and take the steps to achieve. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. DeCawry Robinson, then DeMarcus Lewis Jr.
Alright, good evening, city council, council and Mayor Steinberg. My name is DeCawry Robinson. I'm accompanied by Improve Your Tomorrow, also known as IYT. I'm speaking to express my support for the youth seat. So society is changing, and for young people like me who are going into, who are going into leadership, I should, you know, I should have a say where I go, you know? I should have a say where I go. And with this youth seat, this will give me an opportunity to further my development. So with this, I fully support this youth seat, and I also urge you all to support it as well. Thank you for your time.
DeMarcus Lewis Jr., then Brandon Barra. DeMarcus Lewis Jr., then Brandon Barrage.
You guys don't look that scary. Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is DeMars Lewis Jr., and I'm a part of the nonprofit organization Improve Your Tomorrow, and I would like to advocate in favor of the youth advisory liaison. Since I was very young, I felt frustration at my inability to have a say in the things that mattered to me in my own city. To be fair, no one really wanted a 12-year-old in politics. Now, I'm still quite young, but I feel that I deserve some kind of representation, especially since I too am affected by the law set in place by adults. We can't vote, but we should still have a say in what dictates our day-to-day lives. Additionally, a lot of us are told about these kinds of things in our schools, but it's usually in one ear, out the other, and I feel hands-on experience would give us a better understanding of it. The youth aren't as clueless and naive as a lot of people may think. We know what we want in the world, and the only thing stopping us from advocating for them are a lack of positions to do so. Now, I'm older than the, I'm not able to have a seat in the liaison. However, some of the brothers behind me and even some sisters that I have back at home waiting for me now will have a chance to advocate for themselves and their own futures because they are the future. Thank you for your time.
And I have 10 more speakers. Brandon Barrage, then David Fryo.
Good evening, everyone, and our mayor. My name is Brandon Barrage, and I am the part of the I Y T program, your Improve Your Tomorrow. The reason I want this position is because, first, I want to educate other Black African-American students like me about the youth position on this council. Another reason on this is most kids would normally, they would normally be in school focusing and being on tasks, you know? They would normally like, it wouldn't really matter anyways because they would all mostly graduate for the requirements of the grades. They'd mostly graduate like that. And then they would normally just like sit down, you know, at home, playing games, you know, have a normal nine-to-five job. Me, I'm kind of tired of just having a normal life because it's just, you know, getting boring, doing the same thing over and over, you know, kind of like a loophole. But that's the reason why the youth position would help me, it would help me out to give an opportunity to do more things with my life. Lastly, me signing up for Improve Your Tomorrow takes a very different change in my life, where I'm able to get to know my brothers and my mentors, and this has changed me into the guy I am right now. I want to go further and explore more of my life than to just have a normal job. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. David Fryo, then Naishan Mills.
My fault, I gotta pull it up. Okay. All right. Hello, my name is David Fry, and I'm with I Y T. And I believe the youth should be in council because I feel communities can benefit from a younger voice. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Naishan Mills, then Cyril Williams.
Hello, city council members. You know, my name is Naishan Mills, and I'm here to help advocate for the youth council position. I believe we should have one because we should be able to speak on the things we need, and we are the people who are usually most affected on the most things that happen. And I believe that we are the future in all of us, and I would also like to, you know, say that, you know how most of y'all have kids and think how their kids would feel if they had somebody in that chair advocating for them to speak on them, the things they've been through, how, because some of the things y'all may have experienced, y'all would not experience it the way we have, and how it was different, how some people, you know, may feel scared to go to school, act like something's going to happen, how, you know, y'all know how people are like, you know, shooting up schools every now and then, you know, it's scary sometimes. Sometimes, you know, if you go to school, you know, be feared that something may not come home that day. So I would just say how I think that having one there can be very beneficial for benefiting how they can actually, and how us, you know, me and people like them, can, you know, feel safer and feel like we actually know, because they know how we feel, and they know what we are going through, so they can advocate for us and actually have a say in most things that happen. Because at the end of the day, we, us as people, may be the people replacing your chair and taking, you know, your spot and leading on, you want, you know, and this may feel better for us to, you know, have the exact benefit as to just, yeah, yeah. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Cyril Williams, then Akin Oli.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and council city members. My name is Cyril Williams. I'm here with Improve Your Tomorrow, I Y T, and I'm here to advocate for the position for youth to be on the city council board because I feel like we need more representation of the youth in the community and because the youth are going to be our future going on in the world. Thank you. You have given us your night.
Thank you for your comments. Akin Oli, Kai Manny Perry.
Excuse me, Akin had to leave, actually.
Okay, thank you. Kai Manny Perry. Following Kai Manny is Jaleel Baker, then Mark Dove.
Hello, city council and mayor. My name is Kamani Perry. I'm a part of I Y T, and I came to speak about the youth council position. And I think it is very important to, for the youth to have a voice in politics because we are a part of the community, and we are people too, and we are very affected on the laws people pass and things that happen to the community. And we are the future of the city, and if we don't have a voice in what happens, then the city will not be able to develop and be greater than it was before. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. I have four more speakers. Jaleel Baker, Mark Dove, Ryan Misano.
All right. Good evening, council members and mayor. Thank you for your time and for listening to all the youth members in the public comment tonight. I'm a part of I Y T as well, and I have the honor and pleasure of leading a civic engagement program where a number of our brothers expressed comments to you all for the first time tonight. This was a very exciting topic for them. As you can see, there's a lot of support for this position. I am also in strong support of having a youth advisory liaison position. I mean, why not? Why not have this position? I know that it could seem a little threatening, the idea of someone that's a young person, they haven't gone through an elective process or anything like that. Maybe we're still trying to work out the budget, how much stipend this person should receive, right? But it's a no-voting position, right? And there absolutely will not be threatening any current position or any current council member. And when there's a will, there's a way. We have an opportunity here today to make history, to show youth that we're actually on the side of youth, right? And youth are watching, so we will see, you know, what decision is made tonight, right? Are we taking the opportunity to uplift youth? Are we taking the opportunity to further only withhold youth voices and allow them to be on our commissions, right? Let's uphold our youth vote, let's uphold the support that we have for youth on this council, and truly show them that we support them. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mark Dove, Ryan Misano, then Jay Shenier.
Good evening, city, good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Mark Dove, and I am a part of I Y T. And I think the council should have a youth position because we are the future, and our voices matter to our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Ryan Misano, then Jay Shenier.
Good evening. When I was a boy of 14, my father was so ignorant, I could hardly stand to have the old man around. But when I got to be 21, I was astonished at how much he had learned in seven years. That was Mark Twain. My website is misano news dot com. What is popular is not always right. What is right is not always popular. Let's not forget, the brain isn't fully formed until age 25, when the prefrontal cortex, which determines critical thinking, is formed. Relying on youth for leadership hasn't historically worked out well for any group in human history, and it never will. If you want to know anything, ask a teenager. However, when youth are elevated above the elders and wise, that's the sign of a decaying society. To those who know history and the schools and media don't teach history, Russia and Chinese youth rose up in their communist revolutions. 100 million Chinese and Russians were murdered. The road to hell is paved with good intentions. To the youth, this council is made up of puppets. They don't have your best interests at heart. It is outrageous to see that the ideas that some of us have researched hundreds and sometimes thousands of hours on are angrily and arrogantly dismissed by this council while you elevate the ideas of teenagers who mean well but often haven't researched many of these topics for a single hour of their life. I strongly encourage the young to avoid television, newspapers, radio, social media, drugs, pornography, and sex outside of marriage. For as Teddy Roosevelt said, "If you educate the mind and not the morals, you create a menace to society." Also, we are dealing with disadvantaged youth as the out-of-wedlock birth rate, a key predictor of crime and poverty in life, has risen from 3% in 1940 to 40% today and is rising. Rather than listening to youth who are lied to by schools and media, don't worry, I was lied to as well. We need to provide them the stable families that will help shepherd them through the adversity life presents to us all. Great leaders begin as great followers.
Thank you for your comments. Our final speaker is Jay Shenier.
Evening, mayor, council. Pleasure to be here, kind of. Let me start by saying I'm not here to talk about dog parks. I do first want to say to Leo and Kamora, thank you for your leadership. You guys are articulate. You are leaders of the future. And Mai Bang, thank you for your leadership on this issue. I want to ask everyone who is supporting what Mai Bang is trying to do tonight to stand. And please keep standing. You know, the proposal before you that Pro Tem Bang has put forward was developed in collaboration with the Youth Commission. It's the way we should do it. I will tell you that, you know, for me, it's been a year and a day since I sat in a chair where Katie Maple has done a great job with that chair and representing the neighborhoods. And I was really proud of what we had done for young people. I was proud of the creation of the Office of Youth Development. I was proud of the number of times it took, and finally, we won with Measure L. But I think not doing this is moving backwards. And I don't want to see this city moves backwards. We have an opportunity here to do what very few in this country, if any, we couldn't find anyone who's done exactly the same thing, to provide a voice for these young people. And I would ask you all, are you listening? Are you really listening to these young people about what they need, about what their lives are like, and the fact that they want to get involved in civic government, that they want to get involved to help create their own future? And I think as adult allies, it's really up to us, it's our responsibility to provide an environment where they can do that. It's our responsibility to support them as they move forward. I'm excited about what they're doing tonight. Excuse me? You know, we know this works. We know from somewhere at City Hall that we took people to become leaders. We know from I'm sorry.
Go ahead, just, it's all right.
I'll take 30 seconds left. I appreciate the opportunity here. What I'm just asking is that these are not mutually exclusive things that we're looking at. Do the right thing. Provide support for what Mai Bang is doing.
Thank you for your comments.
Let us turn it over to the members of the council. I know that I have some comments, but let's see how the discussion debate goes. Councilmember Telamontes, are you first up, or was that from an old queue? Okay, okay, go ahead.
All righty. So for the adults in the room, this is not a fight, and framing it that way is wrong, and it sends a wrong message to our students. And so, you know, up here, we take up hundreds of votes throughout the year. We agree sometimes, we disagree other times, we agree sometimes. But we all come to a consensus. We vote, and then we move on to the next thing. And we all have the same common goal of making Sacramento a better place. And so I just want to make sure, like, thank you to everyone that came out tonight and did public comment. I loved hearing from you, and just thank you for participating in democracy. This is the first step, and just thank you for being here. With that being said, I did introduce the alternative, the proposal that we heard first that made it out of law and ledge, or out of personnel committee. And I do feel that having a youth person on the dais sitting up here is undemocratic. We, as a Sacramento City Council, are elected by the people of Sacramento to have a voice on this dais. We have the responsibility of representing our constituents and their needs. And that includes our youth, that includes our communities with disabilities, that includes our communities that don't speak English, that includes our undocumented community that can't vote, and every other demographic that is not represented here on this dais. That's what we're elected to do. We were elected to represent everyone in our communities. And when we take a vote here, whether it's yes or no, or we abstain, we come home to different constituent groups that may agree with our decision or may disagree. And that's our job as council members, to come home and explain our reasoning as to how we arrived to a conclusion. We're solely accountable to the residents and the voters of Sacramento, and there's a mechanism now for our youth to have a voice, and that is through our boards and commissions, which Councilmember Kaplan and I are expanding. And it is through public comment. You have an opportunity to come every single Tuesday and give us your input on parks, on levees, on water infrastructure, on whatever subject matter it is. And I encourage you to keep coming back to city council. We also have a brand-new Sacramento Children's Fund Commission that actually just had its first meeting yesterday, and this commission is solely focused on improving the lives of young people. And so everyone here on this dais had an opportunity to pick one person to represent their communities on that commission. So my ask to my colleagues that are supportive of a youth commissioner, did you select a youth to serve on that commission? Why or why not? And these commissions currently give youth a policy voice appropriately with non-elected commissioners. Now, on the hate speech and the activities that happen here at city council, it has become dangerous sometimes, it has become very hurtful sometimes, and we just can't cut off people. People have their First Amendment rights. There have been times on this dais where the chamber has not been safe, not just intellectually, but physically. And I worry about that. Is it appropriate to bring a youth into this environment? Also, many members of this council, including our city manager, have had their homes targeted with blood on their driveway or people sitting in front of their homes. Will a youth be subjected to this too? We know the answer. It's yes, because we can't stop it from happening. We have very few tools here as a council to curb some of the hateful speech we hear in our council chambers. We would not be acting responsibly by subjecting someone underage to the hateful speech that we hear, to anti-Semitism, racism, and sexism on display every Tuesday. We want someone to serve up here with us, knowing, we can't have someone serving up here with us knowing that we can't protect this young person. We can't even protect our own mayor and our colleagues here who are currently being targeted every Tuesday. My concern with the wages, $40,000 for a young person, there are additional complications, in my opinion, of pay and permits and wages and state law, and the hours for work are complicated. And part of why those laws exist in our labor code to protect youth from overexposure. I do believe the selection process for our youth is vague and does not ensure broad participation. Ultimately, this is why we have districts and elections to guarantee equal and fair representation. An unelected person at any age is not part of the sacred democratic process we all engage in to earn the right to be a voice for our communities. The youth is not subject to recall or future elections, or all of which are measures of accountability rooted in good governance and in transparency. These are not democratic ideals we should ignore. These are not democratic ideals we should ignore. On a personal note, I'm disappointed that this resolution was passed a week before three newly-elected women were sworn into the Sacramento City Council, the second time since 1989. It's an honor to be here. We worked hard, endured a lot, and politics wasn't pretty. As a woman, it was hard, especially a woman of color, and I had to prove to people that I was ready and experienced for the job. I got a lot of questions about my own age and whether or not I was capable, and I know a lot of you too have when you were running. So to hear that a youth was sit on the dais was wrong to me a year ago. I called the mayor and the mayor Pro Tem to ask for a delay on this resolution because we'd be a brand-new council, and I thought it was important for us as a brand-new council to have a say in this, and it was rejected, and the council at the time moved forward within District One, not having a voice on the city council because there was no longer a District One council member. And they said no, and they moved forward, and I believe that it was wrong. This resolution impacts me and all of 550,000 residents in the city of Sacramento. So I urge my colleagues to vote on Councilmember Kaplan and I's proposal. In closing, I'm proud of many opportunities our youth currently have to engage in budget and policy on commissions and departments and in our offices and our communities and throughout the city structure of governance. Many of these opportunities were championed by Mayor Pro Tem Vang, so thank you, and I'm proud to have supported those efforts. But this is a bridge too far, though a proposal erodes fundamental democratic principles and good governance. We owe our collective constituency a level of transparency and accountability that cannot be maintained by an unelected member joint to the dais. Youth engagement is important, but not at the cost of democracy. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Talamontes. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you. I was not in any of the Brown Act bubbles on this item, which I have to say kind of killed me, because I'm used to working with my sister on proposals like this, but I trusted her and I trusted the young people to do what you all needed to do to get here tonight. And I have to say that seeing you all here tonight and hearing what you had to say really reaffirmed that that trust is well-earned. So thank you for taking the time to be here tonight. I take seriously the concerns that other groups are not represented, that have been raised at previous meetings and were raised again tonight, particularly our undocumented community. But I must note that citizenship is actually not a requirement to be on our boards and commissions, and there certainly is no age cap to being on boards and commissions, and we all know there's no age cap to running for office. But I do say all of that to say that I believe that giving voice to one group doesn't mean that we can't give voices to all. This is not a zero-sum game. I really do believe that we can keep working on making sure that all communities have a voice in this chamber, while starting with making sure that youth have a voice in this chamber. As one member of the public said, this is not about making the council more exclusive, it's making it more inclusive. Other things I heard in your public comments, just to name a few, because I could be here all night recapping what I just heard, but that youth might engage more in our discussions if they feel represented up here, that our youth are telling us that they have knowledge and experience, that they want to contribute, that none of us who aren't young people today know what young people today are truly going through. And for those of us who are still coming to terms with the fact that we're not officially young people, I can definitely say that I would never for one minute think that I know what it's been like to be a young person, especially given all that's happened in the last couple of years. I like to think that it was just yesterday that I had my first community leadership role when I was 13 years old, but it wasn't. But I do still remember how it felt to be told that I wasn't ready, and it didn't feel good. So I'm really proud of what I've heard tonight. I'm proud of how you've organized to create a new proposal, where you've listened to the feedback that you've been given, and you have made significant concessions in this proposal to try to address the concerns that have been raised. And for that, you deserve to be commended. It would have been easy to dig your heels in and say, "Our way or the highway," but you didn't. You lowered the age range, you lowered the term limits, you did a bunch of things to make this a proposal that we could try to win some more support for, recognizing that there were new people on this dais who had concerns that we wanted to try to address. So I want to thank you for making those things happen. And I just want to say that I'm more confident than ever that getting a young person on this dais is the right thing to do after hearing what I heard tonight. So thank you all so much again.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Vang, and then if there's no one else, I'm going to speak, and I want to suggest how we approach these questions procedurally in a moment. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thanks, Mayor. First, I just wanted to take a moment just to thank all the young people for coming out. I think oftentimes, you know, folks have said that young people can't sit at city halls and listen to all of the items, but y'all are still here, and I just want to commend each and every one of you. Also, I just want to give a shout out to Kimora and Leo.
Fuckin' rock where your cops are. Just lock the doors during a public meeting.
Please. We're going to ask you to leave if you continue to interrupt. Be quiet.
Lock the doors during a public meeting, Daryl. That's not how this works.
Please read the warning.
Fuck you.
So...
Please escort the gentleman out. You're out. You're out. You've been warned, you're out. You don't come in and disrupt the meeting.
You're even saving it.
Okay, so I'll continue, I'll continue. So, and our young folks absolutely can't handle this, some of my points that I want to make. So first, I just want to say thank you to all the young folks for being here today. I also want to thank all my colleagues for their sharing their reflection on this item. And I do want to say that I know that all of my colleagues on this dais care deeply about young people, and I have tremendous respect for each and every one of my colleagues. But on this item in particular, I would just have to disrespectfully disagree with some of the points that have been made. And so I want to lift up some points. One, you know, I too was a school board member once, and I'll share with you that most often time, it was the young student board member on the dais that was probably the most articulate about the issues impacting their lives. As Councilmember Talamontes mentioned, yes, as elected officials, we are responsible to the voters because they voted us in, but we also have a responsibility to serve those folks that did not get an opportunity to vote for us as well, and that's our young people. And yes, Councilmember Talamontes did call me before she was sworn in and asked if we could hold on this item. But the reason why we didn't was because, one, there was multiple items on the agenda, not just this one. And for so long, young people have always been told that wait their turn. And the young folks told to me, because I actually did go back to the young folks, and they said, "Let's not wait, let's push this through because we want this to happen." And that's the reason why I made the decision, and Councilmember Shenear made the decision, to push this through, because it was actually young people asking us to do this and for us to stop waiting. Something I also want to share is that I appreciate the concerns about young people, right, that they shouldn't be exposed to yelling and criticism, there's mental health concerns. First, I just want to say, no one, neither adults or children should ever be subjected to criticism in the manner that some individuals have endured during public comment here in this dais. But I also want to say that we should not underestimate the resilience of our young people, right? The concern about the mental health piece is, we shouldn't take away their voice. If we know that this can happen, we should do everything we can as adult allies to support and nurture them and to ensure that they're successful in this seat. In terms of the stipend, absolutely, I just want to share, the stipend's actually not $40,000, it's $25,000. The additional dollars are something that I just proposed, it's not in the resolution, which means the stipend's actually not finalized. If we vote on this item today, it's up to the city clerk to actually figure out what the best resolution would be for the stipend. And I know some folks said, hey, you know, some of our city workers don't even make $25,000. And I would say that our city workers deserve a living wage, and we should actually fight to ensure they have a living wage, because after this meeting, we're going to be ratifying two contracts. But that argument for me is flawed because we should do everything we can to make sure that our workers have living wage. At the same time, let's make sure that this young person is compensated for their time and their brilliance. Lastly, I also just want to share again, I know we have two proposals on the table, and I do believe that they're not both, they're not mutually exclusive. We can have a young person sitting on this dais, we can add the additional seats to the commission. I actually think that it makes our city stronger. And then lastly, I know I heard some comments about, you know, if we allow the seat for a young person, what about the multiple identities? What about our seniors? Here's the thing, our seniors can run for office, anyone over 18 can't, right? And that's the reason why the young folks actually made a compromise. If you are from a youth development framework, you know that young people are within the ages of 16 and 24. The young folks actually compromised, because I, you know, wanted to keep it 24, but they said, hey, we've heard some of the city council members, and we want to figure out, you know, we want to win on this, so we're willing to compromise and lower the age to 16 and 17 at appointment, right? And so I give huge kudos to the young people for working so hard to get us to this moment. Lastly, I just want to say, you know, so oftentimes, you know, it's really the unseen weight of our young people that they have to carry. As leaders in our community, as caretakers of their families, as residents of Sacramento, as young organizers, and even as young electeds, we were often told to always wait our turn. And my plea to the council members is that let's not create the same kind of structures that we're trying to fight against, right? Let's make sure that we ensure opportunities and platform for our young people to thrive. Every movement in this country, every movement has always been led by young people and their brilliance, and it's really time that we value, again, their time, their voice, and their brilliance. So I'm really urging my colleagues to pass this item, to pass both items, because I think it's what is right and what is just for the city of Sacramento and for all the young people who have to live with the decisions that we make every single day that will impact their future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Let me suggest something procedurally, and this is maybe part of the educative process, no matter how this vote goes, that the way it works is that if somebody makes a motion on one resolution, somebody who has a different point of view can then introduce a substitute resolution, and if that substitute passes, the first one is not voted upon. And I would ask, as a matter of courtesy to both sides, because I've been talking of this debate, that we allow a vote for both resolutions. Just allow a vote. They are arguably complementary, and that we just allow a vote so that there is a recorded vote for both, because I know that Mayor Pro Tem Vang, whether the vote goes for or against a resolution, would like it at least voted upon. And so it's a game of chicken in terms of who goes first, and then who introduces the substitute resolution, and so I'm aware of it. And so as the presiding officer, I just want to see if, as a matter of courtesy, that we can agree to put both motions on the floor and allow them to be voted on in whatever order. I don't think it matters which order is voted upon first. Is that something that we can do as a matter of comity here, to our respective colleagues?
Could I ask a clarifying?
Yes.
So if both motions pass, the youth seat and the commission proposal will go forth? Because I know part of one motion is to remove the youth seat, so I just want to make sure...
Part of what is?
Part of one of the resolutions is to rescind the youth seat motion, so I just want to clarify that if both motions pass, we would have both the additional commission seats and the youth liaison.
Yeah, I think we would, but I think we kind of know where, I think I know, based upon the debate and conversation, where this is headed. I just want to make sure that there's an opportunity for both resolutions to be voted upon. That's what I'm asking.
So Mayor, I hear you. Madam City Attorney, is that procedurally legal?
It's your mic. Oh. I'm not exactly sure, Mayor, what you're proposing and whether or not...
I'm proposing, what's going to happen here is, and I'll just play it out, because it's real life. If Councilmember Vang were to make her motion first, then Councilmember Kaplan or Talamontes would introduce a substitute motion. If it prevailed, then there would not even be a vote on Councilmember Vang's motion. And the opposite is true, the opposite could be true as well. And so, all I'm asking, I don't think there's anything procedurally odd about it or even wrong, it's just, it's a matter of discretion for the council to say, as a matter of comity and courtesy, that we're going to vote on both the motions in either order and not substitute one for the other. That's all. And I know that's council discretion. Nobody has to agree to that, and the votes can go up or down, however they go, but I'm just trying to avoid who goes first, because then the other one can potentially have the first one not heard.
The procedural rules that the council has adopted provide for a certain structure to vote.
I understand.
And so there's a concern with what about if both motions pass, then really, you end up where you might have to do another motion. So, I mean, procedurally, this is not something that the council really has adopted as part of your rules for, you know, voting on matters in front of you.
Okay, well then, there may not be a motion tonight. I mean, that may be the reality, so why don't I state my point of view on this matter, and then we can see whether anybody wants to make a motion, and if not, then we'll move on to the next item, with I suppose it being continued for lack of emotion, because that is possible. I think it could be worked out easily, but those are the choices, and I think it was important to at least articulate that. Okay, so first of all, I just want to say to all of my colleagues on both sides of this debate, everybody on this dais cares about kids, okay? That's in part why y'all got elected. Everybody cares about kids. What we are debating about, and young people, I should say, not kids, that's a sort of young people, young adults. What we are debating here tonight in the best of democracy is what is the most impactful way to ensure that young people's voices are heard? That's what we're debating, and it's a good debate. And so nobody should, you know, no matter how this turns out, I think recognize that everybody on this dais cares about young people. In the democracy, people just have different ways of going about, trying to get there. Important. I'm proud of the young people here. Thank you all so much for coming out. You give us hope. Thank you to SAC Kids First. Thank you to Mayor Pro Tem Vang.
Cease fire now! 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 Cease fire now!
Point of order. Let's take a moment.
Please do not disrupt the orderly conduct of these proceedings by continuing to speak out from the audience. You're in violation of Chapter 5 of the City Council's procedure. If you will continue, you'll be ordered to leave the meeting.
Cease fire now! Cease fire now!
Please do not disrupt the orderly conduct of these proceedings by continuing to speak out from the audience. You're in violation of...
Cease fire now! Cease fire now!
Cease fire now! Cease fire now! Cease fire now! Cease fire now! Cease fire now!
All right. Let us see if these folks leave or if they come back. Hold on one second, I'm going to wait one minute to see whether they leave. Okay, hold on.
Kill my children! Free cows, God! Free cows, God!
We all do the very best we can to make sure that people's heartfelt opinions are heard, and then we try to make reasonable decisions and stay together as a city. That's what we try on every issue. So thank you for your patience. Let me pick up where I'm proud of. SAC Kids First, Mayor Pro Tem Vang, thank you for organizing. And then Councilmembers Shenear and Councilmembers Talamontes and Kaplan, thank you for your thoughtfulness in terms of thinking through what you believe to be an alternative, a good alternative. I strongly support Mayor Pro Tem Vang's motion. And I support it for a variety of reasons, and I first want to address some of the concerns raised by some of my colleagues, but also some of what we heard in the public testimony. I get the argument, I do get the argument, that there are a lot of people and groups underrepresented in government at all levels. And certainly, Marbey Asala, who is a great neighborhood leader, who we all respect, when she talks about the plight of the undocumented, that hits me hard. Well, it is not perfect, but imagine if this motion passed and the council decided as a body or individually to appoint a 16-year-old dreamer to, as the youth advisory. There are ways that we can find and uplift multiple underrepresented populations at the same time with some will and with some creativity, and that's just one example. What about the others? For example, I think you may have talked as well about the seniors. Why wouldn't there be a senior? Well, you do have one elected senior on the council, and you have one who's pretty darn close here. As a mayor, we're... Sorry, Rick. Oh, I'm in trouble. I think I just, I think I just lost his vote. What can I say? I think I just, it's 70. Come on, man. Hey, I'm a senior too. There you go. I'm 64. I'm 64. My point, humor aside, is that seniors can run for public office and can serve on this dais, as can other underrepresented people. But as was stated by the Mayor Protam, young people under the age of 18 cannot serve in elective office. And so by definition, they're sort of the one population that can't by law have a voice unless we create that voice. And so I think a lot about diversity and why it is in modern America, and this is a good and great thing, and certainly why in Sacramento, we push so hard for diversity when our represented bodies have traditionally been anything but diverse. We do so because we demand that more voices be heard in a formal way and that people who have traditionally been left out of the decision-making process can be heard. That's why we push so hard for racial and ethnic and gender diversity. The same thing is true for our young people, who, it's such a cliche, right? It's like it takes a village, right, that young people are our future? I mean, that has become a cliche, but let's acknowledge that we who sit up here, no matter our age, as adults, are temporary stewards of the quality of life and the present and future of our city. We are temporary stewards. And having a young person up here on the dais consistently would be a powerful reminder to all of us that while we apply a racial equity lens to all that we do, we also must ensure a youth-focused lens for every decision we make. Because we don't do that. We intend to, we intend to. Good hearts, and again, every one of the members on this dais are champions of youth. I see it out in the community, but up here, when it comes to youth budgets, when it comes to how we balance the very difficult fiscal issues that we must balance between traditional definitions of public safety and the more modern definition of public safety, there is no voice up here that specifically represents the lived experience, the present-day lived experience of young people. And so let's make sure that we are reminded that we are all just temporary stewards of the public trust and the youth's future, and let them remind us every week. Now, I can kind of read the tea leaves here, and I see where things are going, and I'm not presenting an alternative motion, because I strongly support what the Mayor Protam wants to do. But if there's anybody on the fence here, I'm just going to say it publicly, because we really do follow the rules, and we don't like talk to each other privately about this stuff, because it's the real, I just want to float something only if it's of interest to anybody who might be on the fence. And that is, if one year in this large stipend is too much, I don't agree, but if it's too much, what if we said that young people serve for one quarter of a year for three months? Now, hear me out for a moment. An intensive internship experience, an intensive internship experience that would include sitting on the dais and participating for a much shorter period of time, but a meaningful period of time, and it would enable, within 24 months, each of the eight council members to have their representative sitting on this dais. I don't know if it's of any interest, I'm not making a motion, I'm not insisting, I'm not even recommending it. I'm just putting it out there, if this is 5-4, 4-5, or whatever it is, to try to just see if that sparks any interest, and if it doesn't, then we'll wait for a motion on either side and see how this all plays out. I support this, and I commend all of my colleagues for engaging in the right way in a great debate. Thank you. Okay. Councilmember Rick Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just want to kind of acknowledge all the young people in the room who came and spoke tonight, and those who came in support tonight. I want to acknowledge you, and I want to thank you, I want to give you one of those things that you do all the time, so, good job. And then everybody else who came out in support of our youth. I was told in a musical that I went to is that you have to be in the room where it happens, because if you're not in the room where it happens, what is happening is happening to you. And it sounds to me that the voice of the youth, based on everything that you've said tonight, that you want to be in the room where it happens, that you may not have a vote, but you do have a voice, and your voice should be heard. And so I talked to my colleagues, because I don't, I heard someone say that both proposals are not mutually exclusive. And so I would put a motion on the table that we combine the two proposals. We focus on our commissions, and we also focus on having somebody here at the dais, and we work out the logistics on all of that, so that therefore we would not just have one seat, we would have multiple seats. And I would take the best of both of these ideas and put them on the table so that they could both be represented, and we would have more youth serving, which is something I think would be a significant benefit for the city council. So I would put that motion on the table and see if there's a second, and see whether or not it's an idea that we can work together to make sure that our youth voice is heard.
Seconded by Councilmember Valenzuela, that's the motion on the floor. Vice Mayor Gueda.
Thank you. Well, first of all, some of you were here during the last council vote, and so you know some of our previous comments. But first, let me just start by, you know, saying how, you know, how proud I am to see the number of young folks, the number of our youth that are here. And, you know, and I think back, because I think it might have been 2010 or 2009 when I first made my first financial contribution to IYT. My first, you know, improvement, you know, commitment, saying, hey, we got to figure out how to continue to support them. And to see the efforts that IYT's done with the 1,300 Men Campaign, you know, I appreciate that, because you're changing the dialogue amongst our youth and moving that. So the power of being here, the power of being in that voice. Someone brought up 2017, the Youth Action Plan. I was proud to be here and vote for that, you know, be part of that. 2019, the, you know, the resolution to add youth commissions and youth commission spots. And I was here also for that, and I think I seconded that motion, you know. And in 2021, also, the creation of youth on commissions. And, you know, again, I was, what a, at first a controversial, there was a divided council on that vote, and that moved forward as well. And, you know, first, I have to say that, you know, in each one of those efforts, that including on the external side, Measure M, I was proud to also lend my name and support and, you know, also do the political activity of getting voters to vote for it. That failed unfortunately by less than a percent to be able to fund youth programs. Measure G as well, I joined in on that support, and on Measure L as well. And all of those, I do have to thank and credit a member of our council here, Councilmember Jay Chenier, who has taken that effort. And I think his legacy and that effort for the last, at least, you know, as far as I can see, over the last two decades, he has done that. So I think he deserves a big round of applause, because I know he's here in the audience. Thank you, Jay, for that. And so, you know, some of the concerns and questions, I may differ with my colleagues on, on the question of the substance, the questions of issues, the questions of conflict, that young people aren't prepared for those debates or those situations or those scenarios. I differ, because I do believe that they're experiencing them today. I do see them being able to speak up on those issues and being able to discuss them. And as a past board member of the Chicano Latino Youth Leadership Project, where we also looked at how do we build young people and help them learn and become empowered on how their government functions, you know, I spent many years on that, and I watched my own young sister, who was a very shy, you know, you know, Estee Chicana, who all of a sudden went through this empowerment of understanding her culture and who she is to be able to move forward in that. So do we need to continue to move on the support and elevate youth voice? Yes, I do think that is true. The question in many parts is the how. And should we, should there be a dedicated platform for our youth? And the answer to that, for me, has always been yes. But the question has been, the question here today is the how. And should they be in the room, to my colleague, Councilmember Jennings, and in the conversation? I also agree, yes. But this is where my own personal experience has come to show the difference. And I thought a lot about this, because I said, let me take this in open heart and about the governance. And I, you know, my experience here was to become a naturalized citizen and go through the citizenship process. And I learned a lot about, you know, our government structure. And for good or bad, we have a city, we have a state, and we have a national governance that elects people by region and by geography to represent communities and neighborhoods. That's representative democracy. That is our representative democracy. Other countries have chosen different ways. They've used a party system, they've used a proportionality system. But here, you know, and I've come to value that level of, the value of a vote, and the value of what that means and what it empowers. And it also reminded me that, you know, we elect folks on a council dais to represent regions, they're not without blind spots. All of us have blind spots, which is why I, as a former commissioner, planning commissioner, citizen commissioner, I value all of the work, and I've always been very critical of our also city staff when we have conflicts with our commissions, because they are our citizen voice that is part of that. So I value those bodies of advisory. So the question today is, what is the goal? It's the youth advisory of us here today. And we do have those platforms. Those are boards and commissions that help us with expertise, whether it be engineers, architects, when it's planning and design, whether it's our legal professionals in the Ethics Commission, whether it's folks who are involved in our Utility Rate Advisory Committee, and particularly, you know, one that was very powerful that we passed in 2019, which was the creation of a youth commission to start looking at our budget and having young people discuss it amongst themselves, what's important for us. Those are critical advisory boards that give us advice here. The other bodies that we have are charter officers. Those charter officers provide us advice, but they work for the council, which is why it's necessary to have citizen advisory boards. They are voted in as part of the charter by the electorate. And there is where I go back to our form of government. Our form of government is a representation of what the electorate has put on there. And I remember, and this is where I appreciate where young people feel, because I remember being in, as an adult, not a citizen yet, and watching everybody else vote and have a voice. And so I respect that desire to have a voice. But I also, I also remember what it was like and what the value is and the power of being sworn in to be a U.S. natural citizen in 2002, having gone through the process, and what that value of a vote does and what this body does. This body represents, and I've had this with the conversation with charter officers, this body is supposed to be a representation of what the electorate has put in place. We have a responsibility as a body to identify our blind spots. And that's why I can't support the addition of a dais member being a non-elected member of our community. Now, is there a role for them? I do think, one, they should be compensated. I mean, if people are going to spend their time, we should pay them. When we have someone with an expertise that comes up here from public works, they should have the opportunity to speak before an item. They should have the dedicated opportunity to have an item on the agenda so that they can speak before we deliberate. And then from a practical matter, unlike school boards, where we do have youth representatives, we have a land use authority in a situation where we have public hearings, and it's not perfunctory, it's not just a flow of the motion, but we have a standard format of when we open and close the public hearing. We open the public hearing to get advice, whether it's from our commissions, whether it's our youth, whether it's our public, and then we have to actually close the public hearing. It can't be the city manager, it can't be the clerk, it can't be the city attorney, it's got to be an elected member of the body to close the public hearing. And at that point, it's our debate. So even if we had a youth person up here, they would not be able to engage in that debate, because at that point, we've closed the public hearing. We can call up on anybody to come and answer questions, and I do think that we should have that opportunity. Here, I also think is where there's a flaw in the proposal, and I would suggest that we look at elevating, enhancing the chair position of the youth authority, youth commission. And that is, the youth commission chair has to listen to, and must listen to, if they're a good chair, to all of their commissioners from across the city. Yet if we were to appoint just a youth liaison, just for that position, someone could come in in that year one and not actually have gone through the deliberate process of actually becoming a vice chair in a chair. There is a benefit to that youth person, to be able to go through that process, to gain the trust of their colleagues on that youth commission, to become a commissioner, and become a person that comes here and reports to the council. It doesn't necessarily have to be on the dais, and that, I think, is where the difference is. And I think it's important we support youth for what, not what they want, but what they need, and that's a dedicated time on this council. So in my position, Mr. Mayor and colleagues, I do think that we should increase the number of members of the youth commission and all commissions. I do think we should dedicate the funding appropriately to pay for the time for someone who will be here to give us advice. I do think that it's important that we dedicate youth, but I don't agree, just having known what the value of a vote and what it is to be a naturalized citizen, and what it is to not, to actually represent people who elect, and our responsibility as electeds to identify our blind spots, because we do have them as a body. So I'll leave it at that, Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Gueda, I now have Councilmember Maple.
All right.
I'm sorry, and then we got Councilmember Talamontis, Mayor Protam Vang, and then we're going to finish the debate. Go ahead.
Excellent. Thank you, Mayor. And again, I want to echo what some of my colleagues have said around just thanking the young people who've come here to speak tonight. I know it's not an easy thing to do, and I was really, really impressed, for those of you especially, that maybe it was your first time, and maybe it was difficult. Public speaking has never come naturally to me. It's actually still hard to me right now in this job, and I work at it every day, and I know that you two will do that, and soon enough, we'll see you up here as well, or in other positions throughout the city, or wherever you choose. And so I just really want to, really want to thank you for coming here. And I just want to say that I know for a fact that our city supports youth. I mean, I don't know very many cities, and maybe someone can correct me, that has done the sorts of historic investments that we have. One being Mezurrel, which is the most recent, creating our youth fund, the other being the Office of Youth Development, and then, of course, as was already mentioned, our youth commission. I think there's really no doubt that Sacramento leads on this issue and cares about it. And so I was really heartened by some of our mayor, comments by our mayor and other colleagues about, this is not an us versus them, this is not, to me, it's not a fight. To me, it's, we are, we agree that this is an important issue, and where we may disagree or where the challenge is, is in the details and what that looks like. And so one of the things that one of the speakers said, kind of sat with me, which is that we are all here, up here, because someone took a chance on us and gave us an opportunity. That's true, absolutely. In fact, that's true 1,000 times over for me. Where I came from and the experiences that I had in my young life, I would not be up here if not for 1,000 chances and opportunities from people around me. And as the youngest person up here, one of the youngest ever elected in the city of Sacramento, I first got that opportunity by being appointed to a commission by a former city council member. I was able to learn the rules, procedure. I was able to engage in policy discussions, and eventually I learned how to run a meeting... I was able to engage in policy discussions, and eventually I learned how to run a meeting. These things sound basic, but they're challenging. The, the rules of order can be incredibly, even now, convoluted. As you see, sometimes even up here, we struggle trying to figure out, wait, who is doing what, or what motion is on the table? So those are challenging, but all of that work, being on that commission, absolutely prepared me to be in this position now. And I'm incredibly grateful for it, and glad, and frankly, glad that I got that experience before coming to this job, because it, it's only amplified up here. And so I think having more youth voices on boards and commissions is absolutely going to set us even, even further forward as a city, give us an opportunity to hear directly from young people. And I think this is something that Councilmember Talamontes hit on that I absolutely agree with, which is, a lot of times when something's coming here, it's been talked about many, many times. It's been through different committees, different commissions, community meetings, and by the time it gets to us, it's pretty much baked. We're voting yes or no on, on a baked policy. In fact, one of the best ways to actually engage and have your voice heard in policy is to be in the rooms like these boards and commissions and committee meetings where that policy development is happening, where you can say, wait a minute, I agree with the overall viewpoint of this policy, but I don't agree with this space because it doesn't make sense for me and other young people, it doesn't make sense for my neighborhood or, or my community. And so I think that that's a really important point that you made, Councilmember Talamontes. And I think having those perspectives will only make us stronger as a city. And, and as I sat here and listened, one of the things that came to mind to me is, what seems to be the debate to a degree is a matter of space, right? Whether a person sits there or there is a matter of feet. Whether or not someone can speak is not, not up for debate. People can come here. And in fact, one of the best ways that you can come and advocate for your point of view and have, is do exactly what you did tonight, exactly what you did. Show up in this room, come speak, let us know how you're feeling. That is the best way to let us know and have your voice heard. And so, and then secondly to that, please apply for our boards and commissions, please be on our youth commission, please be on the children's fund. And sometimes, you know, I also serve on PNP E, the Personnel and Public Employees Committee, which is how we select people that go on these various commissions. And sometimes people will get those seats and sometimes they don't, and they're often really, really challenging decisions. We have many qualified people that will sometimes apply for one space. And so we always tell people the same thing, please come back, please try again. And so I just wanted to share those, those points of view. I, I echo a lot of the concerns from Councilmember Talamontes and Kaplan and, and Guetta. They're, in the short period of time that I've been in this space, it can be, some of the things that happen here are traumatizing, they're challenging. Some of the things that people say to you while you're up here really leaves, leaves something with you. And, you know, I'm, I, you know, I'm thirty, well, am I thirty-two now? I'm like, wait, what? And, and sometimes I, I really struggle myself with how, how I take that all in and how I process it. And so I worry about things like mental health. I worry about whether or not we have the right resources to, to protect people, protect young people in this space. And so for that reason, I, I am supporting the proposal by Councilmember Talamontes and Councilmember Kaplan. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's, let's try to conclude the debate if we can here. We got Councilmember Talamontes, Mayor Protem Vang, there's a motion on the floor, and we'll, we'll count our votes, we'll, we'll cast our votes accordingly.
All right. I'd like to make a substitute motion to request an amended Resolution 2022-0387, Creation of Youth Advisory Liaison to City Council, to create Sacramento Youth Voice with the additions of councilmembers' suggestions on increasing youth stipends for the Sacramento Youth Commission at Law &amp; Ledge, which Councilmember Kaplan agreed to, and to have better communication with the council for input for youth on all subject matters.
All right, there's a substitute motion now on the floor, so Mayor Protem Vang.
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted just to say a few words before we take our vote, since Councilmember Talamontes did make her proposal, but I actually wanted to give the opportunity, Councilmember Lohley just pinned up as well.
Oh, go ahead.
I actually just wanted to give this moment, actually, to our young people, because I was going to rebuttal, but then I thought, the best folks actually closes out whether we get the vote tonight or not. I think it's really important that Leo and Kamora gets to close this up and actually respond to all of the council members who's made their point, because tonight's decision is about young people. We are adults, and we're making a decision about how they should engage in government, and I think it's important to have, to have both of our youth up here to speak and to close it out.
I mean, Mayor, Mayor Protem Vang, I think this is the way you could do this, because it's, it's, you should be the one summarizing. If you have questions for the young people, you can pose it in the form of a question, and they can answer it. That's appropriate. You have the right to ask a question.
Okay, so I will, actually, Kamora and Leo, can you please come up here, both, both of you, can you please come up here?
We want to make this brief, please.
Yeah, and my question is, after hearing your mayor council tonight, how are you feeling in this moment as a young person in the city of Sacramento, and what would your recommendation be as we close this up? Thank you.
All right. I think I understand a lot of the concerns of the council members, and I think that where you come from and your lived experiences are very important. And I don't think that any of us in this room, no matter what side of this amendment we're on, want to invalidate what people have lived through and what that makes you vote on this proposal is. And I think that's, that's totally okay. I think I am nevertheless disappointed. I think that it's, it is frustrating to see these concerns, particularly considering, like, I think that a lot, maybe not a lot, but some of the concerns surrounds like mental health and stuff like that, and I think that just because there are things that are imperfect about this position, does not mean that we should stop it. Like, if every imperfect bill or every imperfect law ever was stopped, we would not have a single law or a single bill, and nothing would get done. So I think that we shouldn't let perfect...
Okay. I think, please, patience. Mayor Protem Vang asked a question, please answer, and let's conclude the answer, okay? We've had a robust debate. Please conclude the answer.
You're doing great, Leo, go ahead.
Okay. I'm frustrated, and I think you should reconsider your vote. Thank you.
I do, but, Mayor, I, I just think it's important to have our youth presenter finish, so I would like Kamora just to answer my question, and then we'll, I'll close it up.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Very quickly, please.
Okay. I will talk fast. Okay. I am disappointed that the people that sit up here forget that they were a young person yesterday. It was not super long ago, no matter your age, though age is just a number. If we were able to sit through this three-hour meeting so far, we have the capacity to sit up there right there. Can I keep going?
No, I think, you, you, I think the way you just said it was perfect.
Thanks.
Go ahead, if you want to, if you want to finish answering Mayor Protem Vang's question, please do so. Please do so. Finish answering the question. Please finish answering the question.
I will say that when youth are present, like the various, you've taken up all these rows right now, the dynamic changed in here. You guys can say that you guys care about youth because you guys are parents, you guys are community members, you guys are public service people. When you've sat in this room, you guys kept saying you cared about our mental health, that's wonderful, but you guys as adults need to do your part and support us, and that's all I have to say, though.
Finish. I'm going to let her finish. That's it. I don't want to, hold on. I don't want to hear any more interruptions from anybody, including my colleagues. I'm going to allow her to finish. Go right ahead. Finish, finish, finish.
I, I would like to stop being interrupted, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Kamora, you can just finish your comments, thank you so much. Go ahead, you're doing great.
So I will say that as a young person that is very engaged in civic engagement, I'm disappointed that people that I will look up to and think that I might sit on that dais one day do not believe in youth, though, because we are the presence today. Thank you.
Mayor, just given the counter motion on the table, and I think as we're counting our votes up here, I just want to say, you know, as I shared earlier, both proposals are not mutually exclusive. I am supportive, absolutely, of expanding all of the, all of the commission. One thing I will recommend, since that counter motion is on the table, and hoping that my colleagues will accept this amendment to their motion, is that when you look at their proposal, there is not capacity for our city clerk to make sure that we implement this from a youth development framework. And as I am a big supporter of expanding our youth seat, I want to make sure that our city clerk has the resources and support from our Office of Youth Development and YPSY to ensure that these fourteen commissioners who are going to be sitting on these seats have the ample support to be able to really be successful in these seats. I think that's really important. And in the implementation plan, there was no really support on that piece, and I think if we're working from a youth development framework, let's make sure that as, if we, if this vote does pass, that we do everything we can to support the city clerk's office so that she can be successful in onboarding these young people and giving them the support that they need to be successful in our city. That would be my amendment to their counterproposal, because I want it to be successful.
Okay.
And hope that they will accept that.
That's very gracious.
So the amendment is to have the city clerk work on the implementation of it and to have more staffing for it?
To, for her to propose what it will take, because I want to make sure that she has the support she needs to be successful. And if, if we want to make sure that these young folks are successful in this commission, it's important the city clerk has the resources she needs to be successful in implementing those commission seats.
Just, just quickly, I have worked with the Office of Youth Development and spoken with them, that if youth were added to each board and commission, they have the capacity to bring them under and have the same training that the Sacramento Youth Commissioners do, do have, so that they would be brought under and trained.
Yes, but the boards and commissions are actually overseen by our city clerk's office, so I think it's going to take both of them, and I want to make sure that the city clerk has the resources to implement. That's really important.
To implement one additional seat on each board?
Yes, it will take time to onboard. I have Mindy answer.
I don't think it's a controversial ask.
I'm just trying to understand what exactly the ask is.
The ask, yeah, go ahead, Mayor.
That the city clerk work with the commissions to make sure that the one additional youth member is easily onboarded. That's all that it is, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lohley, I'm sorry, I, I didn't mean to skip over you and all the commotion. Would you like to say something?
I just want to make a quick statement.
Please.
Thank you very much. First of all, I want to thank everyone that was here and spoke very passionately, so I really appreciate your time. But at the same time, as you can see, you've been here for three hours, right? Imagine being here for three hours where, where you don't have the ability to vote or really make some kind of a comment to make things happen. One thing I can tell you is, I want to make sure that the youth advisory liaison position is definitely not being used for political purposes. I understand, and I have full confidence in our youth. I'm a father myself, and I think certain comments were made that this council has a tendency of running away from the youth. I beg to differ. As a father, I welcome the youth, but not for political aspects, for future aspects. Majority of you know that last year, this council allocated over eight million dollars for the youth. So my question to you is that, have you seen that money? Has that come to your community? Has that been invested in your projects in your community? Because then again, this coming year, you have another ten million dollars that's going out there. So I'm hoping, while you're here tonight, you also do your research to find out where those resources are going to, because they're going to organizations that are being ran by adults in the name of helping the youth. So there's a lot that you can do that can be very productive, and that is to make sure you follow the money. As you all sit here today, as you all sit here today...
It is not appropriate to interrupt the speaker, and I don't care. Excuse me, excuse me, the member is speaking, let the member, let the member finish speaking, and you, sir, should know better, you're an adult. So please, go right ahead, Mr. Lohley. Go ahead, Mr. Lohley.
So, again, what I'm trying to say is, you have your entire life ahead of you. Don't let emotions take the best of you. The fact that you're here tonight, it's phenomenal, but also remember that times go by extremely fast. If you go out there, today, we live in a world that gas is six dollars a gallon. Groceries are up by thirty percent. So I'm hoping as you're here tonight, you all... And again, I want to thank all you guys for being here tonight, and I'm glad that you want to take a stand, but always be in control of your own decision, and make sure you don't get manipulated in the future. Thank you.
All right, we've got a substitute motion on the floor. It's by Councilmember Talamontes, seconded by Councilmember Kaplan. Please call the roll on the substitute motion.
Thank you, Mayor. To reiterate, the motion on the table is to, is option A on the recommendations, which is to adopt the amended resolution creating the Sacramento Youth Voice, and to recommend to the Compensation Commission that they increase the youth commissioner stipends. This council does not set stipends, it's the Compensation Commission, so we'd be recommending that to them. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Thank you.
She said, yeah?
Okay, that is the substitute motion that's on the table. Please call the roll.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan?
Aye.
Councilmember Lohley?
Aye.
Councilmember Talamontes?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
No.
Councilmember Maple?
Aye.
Council, Vice Mayor Guetta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
No.
Mayor Protem Vang?
No.
And Mayor Steinberg?
No. The motion passes five to four. All right, that concludes the item for this evening. Thank you very much, everybody. It's never, it's never the end, it's only the beginning, on any debate, on any issue, Please keep coming, please keep coming back, as all your, as all the council members encourage you to. Okay.
Do we have a city manager's report this evening? Or do you want to go to council comments, ideas, and questions?
No. Council ideas and, council ideas and questions, please. Council ideas and questions. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you for coming out.
If we could kind of clear the chambers quietly, I'd sure appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay.
If, if, if we could please clear the chambers quietly, why don't we hear from Mr. Jennings? Why don't you go, Rick, please?
All right, I'm going to go. I want to give a big shout out to Parks Commissioner Joe Flores, District Seven Park Commissioner, and the Sacramento Bee Latino Changemaker, who partnered with students at Sacramento City Unified New Technology School, where they won one of three Sacramento Bee Climate Change Grants. The Bee asked for video proposals and how they would use five thousand dollars to help fund climate change solutions, and not only the New Tech High students won, but their proposal was also the highest rated. So I want to say congratulations to Joe Flores and the students at New Tech High School.
Councilmember Talamontes?
I just want to give a shout out to Isabella from M.D.C.R.E., the homeschool student that they came here to council chambers a few months ago. They just won gold at the Pan America Games as part of the USA gymnastics team, so kudos to them.
Congratulations. Councilmember, Mayor Protem Vang?
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to announce three events happening. First, this Thursday, Metal Lights in Metta View at The View, hosted by our office in YPSY. Come experience the magic of the season with us at Metal Lights in The View. There's going to be lots of fun activities for families, giveaways, and this is a free community event, open to all ages. And then I also want to let y'all know that this Saturday, September twenty, September, no, Saturday, December sixteenth, at the Pennell Community Center, we're also giving out bikes. It's a 2023 bicycle giveaway by Wicked Wheels Motorcycle Club, and so encouraging everyone to come out. We have bicycles available for ages youth four to fourteen. Parents and child must be present to participate. Raffles will begin from ten to eleven-thirty, and the raffle will start at twelve. And then lastly, next Monday, December eighteenth, there will be a toy giveaway by the Henley and Harris Foundation at the Mack Road Valley High Community Center at seven-eight-three-three Center Parkway. There's going to be toys, coats, hot food, and lots of fun. And so encouraging everyone to come out to three really awesome holiday events happening in South Sacramento.
I know I'm being asked next. This Friday and Sat- Saturday, follow, follow along, Santa in D1. Santa will be on the fire truck. We also have our Endercome Public Safety Students, as well as My One Youth. We will be making stops around North Natomas, spreading some joy, some snow... We will be making stops around North Natomas, spreading some joy, some snow, and some carols as well as candy cane. If and to my colleagues, we all celebrate something a little different. Happy Hanukkah, happy holidays, Merry Christmas. This is our last meeting before break, and I wish you guys nothing but the best.
Thank you, Councilmember Kaplan. Councilmember Maple.
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Couple exciting events coming up. So our very own Two Rivers Cider in District 5 is putting together a Christmas lights ride. So they will be meeting at Two Rivers Cider Thursday, the 14th. That's this week at 6:00 PM. They're going to be riding to Oak Park Brewing Co. and then to East Sack and then to 43rd and M Street for the 10th Annual Boys for Bikes Bake Sale. So they are not only raising funds for Boys for Bikes, which is a wonderful organization that provides bikes to young people in need, but they also will be accepting toys, blankets, and other needs for Mustard Seed School and Wellspring Women's Center, among others. And so we'll be helping support them and providing menstrual pads and other other needs for women for the Wellspring Women's Center as well as some toys. So if you can, you want to ride your bike and have fun on the light ride, please do attend that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Maple. Councilmember Talamontes.
All right. Last week, I spoke about the door decorating contest, and I love the holidays, so I'm proud to announce that I won Miss Christmas of the city of Sacramento. My door won the door decorating contest, so really excited about that and just had to share with the world.
Yeah, no one announced the vote. I think there's.
Where's the mayor? His staff sent an email and didn't get to it.
Councilmember Laloe.
Thank you very much. That's funny because I thought we won the best door, so. And I thought you won it too, Council. Anyways, thank you, Ms. Vice Mayor. I just want to give a huge shout out to the Grant High School football team. Unfortunately, they they made it to the state's game, but they didn't win the game. But I just want to I just want to state how proud we are as a city that they represented us. And in our eyes, they're definitely the state champions. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Laloe. From District 6, I wanted to first thank the owners and employees and workers at Sac City Brews for co-hosting with my office, a great organization that's been helping out many survivors of human trafficking from Stockton Boulevard and Broadway. Community Against Sexual Harm, I want to thank their board members and their staff and some of the survivors who came. And we talked about some critical issues about, you know, that are affecting not not only our young people, but but those that are in our neighborhood that are being daily victimized by human trafficking, specifically in this case, sex trafficking. And so it was a great event to raise money for them. I want to thank the anonymous donor who was willing to do the matching funds for those. We had community members and neighbors. And I personally want to thank former, I don't know if she, I think she may have retired or might have come back, but Captain or Lieutenant Cindy Stinson, who was with us. And I appreciate her work and that of of those on our city personnel, both in many departments, who helped work the help and support the reset program to help those who are surviving the issue of human trafficking. So with that, I do want to thank my colleagues who in the past have supported the funding for that organization as well. And with that, Madam City Clerk, that is concludes council comments. If we can move on to our next item.
Thank you. We're going to move to public comments, matters not on the agenda. I have 12 speakers. I'm going to call off a couple. Jared Landreth, Lambert, Ryan Masano, Jimmy Anderson, then Guy. Mr. Landreth.
Good evening, Mr. Landreth.
How you doing? Well, I'm back again. So Altos Avenue now, we're still having problems out there. We've had two fires. We had a RV that was on fire yesterday. We also had a knifing out there. So this trail out there where these where the tents are is very dangerous out there. Something really needs to be done out there. I know that the fire department's on it because they're out there almost every single day, which it shouldn't be going on out there. But the thing is to me is that I don't understand why the Rangers have neglected this so long because if they would have not neglected this, we wouldn't have this problem right now. But they they did clear out part of our, you know, over by Arco, which is a lot better right now. But those people that were there are now moved into our neighborhood, so we're up at almost 20 tents now. And every day, a tent comes in. That's more garbage that the city has to pay for. And it's just it's gotten to the point where it's completely out of control out there. Something needs to be done. The residents out there, they're looking at saying, hey, we need to have something done out here. We feel like we're being disrespected by the city and and the Rangers. And it's just that they they want to know, and the Rangers have said that they were going to come out and clean it up, but we haven't heard it. This has been four weeks. It's almost a month now. So we want to get some answers out of that and find out when they're going to come out and when they're going to do their job because that's what we want to do. And Mr. Laloe, if I can get some answers out of you about maybe you can find out when the Rangers are supposed to be coming out there. But we need to get that cleaned up because every day that we don't have it cleaned up, it gets worse. So that's where we're at. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Landreth.
Lambert, then Ryan Masano, Jimmy Anderson, Guy, and Brian Fuller.
Good evening, Mr. Davis.
I want to put this up here.
Please proceed, and I'll work on it.
Okay. My name is Lambert Davis, founder of To the Bay and Back Cheese Cakes. We have gone viral. We will be featured in LA this weekend, and I want to send a shout out to the millennials who took a baby boomer and sat me down and figured out how we're going to do this thing to get around all this racism that we've experienced, even inside this chamber. It says right here, which Mr. Laloe only touched on the loss, but the Grant High School Pacers football team from one year this month have won five championships. They've won five championships in one year. And these are some of the things that these teenagers should receive. Pay attention, city manager, players, cheerleaders, Grant Drumline, teenagers, all of them were part of this journey. And I think that the first thing the teenagers should get should be summer jobs. Let's forget about all of these photo ops. Give them summer jobs, and you have plenty of time for that. They should have tickets to go see the Kings versus the Lakers. Why the Lakers? Because the Lakers win championships. School rally with Mayor Steinberg. He should come to Grant High School and do a rally. They they are a multicultural football team, so they should have banquets for soul food, Hawaiians, Tongans, Samoans, Chinese, Mexican, Italian foods, because that's what makes up that team. And the Grant Drumline budget should be inside the city manager's office. And it's a shame that the city manager's not here because they have five assistants.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Ryan Masano, then Jimmy Anderson.
So does the.
Go ahead, proceed.
Okay, so I want to address, first of all, that we're held till 8:45 at night. We should be speaking first. We should be speaking for about five minutes. And it shows what you think of the community is the fact that we get two minutes dead last, have to wait for everybody else. We should be speaking before a packed house. Everybody that comes should have to listen to what members of the community have to say on topics not on the agenda. Instead, you guys shove us for dead last, so nobody hears this stuff. And and then, if you look at this, this is back in April, and you could see we had a full screen, and you could see public comment matter, and it's got the speaker's name on there. Okay, that's back in April. Then I started telling the truth. And then, what you did, very cleverly, I might add, is now you stick it to where you put that big whatever, public matters not on agenda, so everybody gets to read that. People are not going there to read that. That's not what they're going for. Meanwhile, you stick us speakers in a tiny box at the bottom that you could barely see. That's what you do to us. Shows what you think of us. You do think we're that small. And then, I want to talk about Israel. Israel is an illegitimate nation, and this city council needs to renounce your support for Israel. There's a genocide going on right now. 18,000 more people were killed after 15,000 were originally killed in 1948 when Israel started. 750,000 people were kicked off of their land, Gazans. And you say you care about undocumented aliens? What about the people in Gaza, the Palestinians? What about them?
Mr. Masano.
Quiet down. Quiet down. We're talking, this is the truth that you need to. It is germane. You support Israel. So that needs to be, this council needs to renounce your support for Israel. We should not be supporting foreign nations. It is speaking to the.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Jimmy Anderson, then Guy. Jimmy Anderson.
Madam Clerk.
See any movement? Guy.
Move on, Madam Clerk.
Sir Brian Fuller, then Jay Eldon.
How you doing, members? I'm not a big fan of none of you, and I was in the Marine Corps for 25 years, and I see so much chaos in the city of Sacramento that it's not funny. I was with an anti-terrorism unit with the Marine Corps, and I've been to the Middle East, and I've seen violence in your district more in the last couple of years than I ever have. I'm a Sacramentoan, but I'm going to tell you right now, I'm pathetically pissed off, especially at her, and I wish they would have recalled you because to me, you're worthless. I'm telling you right now. I'm not sugarcoating nothing. I don't have any sympathy or feelings for you, but the city of Sacramento is turning into a big toilet, especially in District 4. This guy's done wonders in his district. You, shame on you. I won't vote for you, and I won't vote for him either. Daryl Steinberg is nothing but a puppet, and he just likes to talk and cut these youth off. He can't keep his mouth shut. And I know people that like him, and God forbid if he ever gets into the Attorney General's office. Oh, my God. I'll move the hell out of this country because he is worthless. He's a bad leader. He letting our city go to hell. People are ending up right over there on Broadway. And you know what Broadway is? It's coroner's office under his watch. He needs to wake up and smell the coffee. That's what he needs to do. He is nothing to me and your district. Man, I'm telling you, my Marine buddies don't even like you. They and people that are in the community don't like you because you don't support the police, you don't support the fire department. You just want to have your own agenda. Yeah, I'm telling you that.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Brian Fuller, then Jay Eldon, then Angel Lopez.
Tough act to follow. Good evening, care members. I'm interested in hearing from the council on existing efforts underway to combat a perceived increase in retail crime and shoplifting and the implementation of the funding Sacramento has received to date. Last week, the National Retail Federation retracted their original claim that organized retail crime was responsible for nearly half of a $94 billion amount $94 billion amount of shrink that was experienced in 2021. Using the Federation's own methodology, that number is now estimated at 5%. Meanwhile, internal theft from employees accounts for 29% of that number, with internal costs and administrative errors accounting for 27%. At the state level, the Public Policy Institute of California has released their annual crime trends report in September of this year and found that shoplifting rates in the state are down compared to pre-pandemic levels. In Sacramento County specifically, that number has decreased by 14%. Also in September, the Newsom administration allocated $267 million statewide to create, quote, fully-staffed retail theft investigation units, increase arrests, and create task force, task force, among other activities. Sacramento received two different tranches of that funding, 9.4 million for enforcement that includes a target of a 20% increase in organized retail theft arrests, and 2.1 million for a vertical prosecution unit consisting of a deputy DA and one investigator that will investigate and prosecute organized retail theft. Meanwhile, our local representative, Assemblymember Kevin McCarty, recently became chair of the Assembly Public Safety Budget Subcommittee, and the first topic he mentioned in his press release was cracking down on retail theft. This all appears headed toward familiar territory. Large amounts of funding for a phenomenon without consensus on the size or scope of the problem, much less a consistent definition, but will result in increased police presence to combat low-level offenses. This combination has led to minorities being jailed at disproportionate levels in the past, and I'd be interested to hear if the city council is thinking of any additional oversight of this effort in Sacramento County to ensure that this response is proportionate to the level of the problem. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Jay Eldon, then Angel Lopez, then Joseph Barnes.
Hello, city council. Thanks for being here. Today, I'm here on behalf of my friend Jessica and her husband Felipe and their neighbors who all live in tents right outside at Cesar Chavez Plaza. This afternoon, officers came to their camp while she was gone and posted notices to vacate by tomorrow. Tomorrow, Jessica's camp will be swept. A swept is a forcible displacement of homeless people from their tents. And tomorrow, there will also be legal observers like myself documenting what's going on. You all know who Jessica is. She's in this chamber quite a bit. She's also been in downtown for about 30-something years, 20 years, sorry. Jessica is disabled. She has difficulty walking and only has has one hand that she can use. She also suffers from seizures almost every week. All the residents of the camp suffer from disability. There are three wheelchair users, and last March, Jessica's neighbor lost his feet to the cold, to frostbite. I made a disability accommodation request for Jessica, and I sent it to the police department, the DCR, the city, and the county a month ago while she was shopping. Petey bagged her tent and belongings and put them across the street with one of her neighbors. The voicemail I got when I asked the officer why they threw like what they were doing said that they didn't throw anything away because of the disability accommodation request. So the city is aware of Jessica's disability and therefore should not force her to move without providing her reasonable accommodation. She tried Shelter Inc. and got bedbugs, and then she just tried Miller Park recently, but it was too cold and hard to walk to the bus or use the bathroom there. Yesterday, Jessica spoke at a press conference in front of the DA's office, and she shared a podium with mayoral candidate Dr. Flojane Koffer and Mark Maron. Jessica has dedicated her life to helping the homeless in Sacramento. By sweeping Jessica and her community, the city is showing that it does not believe.
Comments, your time is complete. Our next speaker is Angel Lopez, then Joseph Barnes. So Angel, Joseph, then Rev, then Mike Snell.
Hello. I have so much to say, I don't even know where to begin. I always start like that. Somehow, you systematically disempowered a whole community by attacking a vital space in the neighborhood. You stole a community park that was used by 200-plus people a day. State workers would walk there on their lunches. Nannies would be there during the daytime. Families with childrens and dogs in the evenings, and a whole group of people like us who are disabled and elderly met there every single day as a way of social interaction and where we felt safe with our dogs. What really fries me is that you build your rhetoric on lies and bullshit, and you print it and you tell that to the news. I so many, I don't even know where to begin. We could talk with what you just printed recently, that historically, there's been problems with safety and maintenance in that park, which is completely untrue. 22 to 23, there was a dozen million 311 calls. That was by people starting a smear campaign against us to shut it down, and that was by us as well because the temporary dog space that was set up was unsafe, unsavorably, and couldn't be used because we weren't engaged in how to have it viably workable. You also say that there is historically no multi-use spaces that have been successful in other cities. Have you looked to Davis? They actually have four that are multi-use, off-leash, and have been going on and successful for years and years and years. There's Aspen Greenbelt, which stretches between Glacier Drive and it's next to a residential green space. There's Slide Park. There's Walnut Park in an unfenced dog park in Davis where you'll find off-leash exercise areas directly east of the tennis court, and there's John Baravato Park. All of those have multi-use off-leash spaces. So I beg you to either do your research or actually engage the people that use the park because we're hurting. A whole community has been struggling and miserable for 11 months, and it's just not fair. Only 15% have children, 45% have dogs.
Joseph Barnes, then Rev.
Yes. It's my pleasure to talk to you. I'm here to give you some comments regarding the information that's been distributed regarding the dog parks. I'm a retired police captain. I spent 30 years with the Sacramento Police Department. I've lived in in. I've lived in Curtis Park for 45 years. I live directly across from the park. I've done a lot of personal observations of the park over the years. Many times, off-duty, I've seen things happening over there, and I've called a car to come and take care of it. So I've done a lot of off-duty kind of work that most people are not aware of. The thing I see with the park, and it's disturbing to me, is the sudden change that was made recently. One day, suddenly, a fence is put up in the park, and then they're claiming there's not enough room for the dogs. Well, they determined what the room was. There's no question about that. For 45 years, I have watched, I've participated, I have a dog, and the activities in the park. Everyone gets along pretty well. It's a social thing to most people, and I think that's a good thing. I think every community should have that. But it's very important that the park is made available to people that live there.
Because now it's empty. You wanted to say...
Pardon me?
Because now it's empty, and you wanted to say that. Since it's empty all the time, the park is empty.
Right. As it stands now, the park is totally empty.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. I have three more speakers. Rev, Mike Snell, then Kevin Bolts.
Pardon me?
Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Rev.
All right.
Thank you. And thank you for your service to the city.
I have three more speakers. Rev, Mike Snell, then Kevin Bolts.
There was a group called Occupied Movement, probably about seven years ago. I'm sure you remember them. They slept in front of y'all, City Hall, till the grass went dead. I slept outside of my limo, keeping an eye on them, because I started believing in what the Occupied Movement was doing. And then I seen at the end of it, Occupy, Occupy itself and stayed home, like the homeless people just stayed out here. And I've been out here ever since, with no help from the community. I wanted to speak to Steinberg, because he got a friend that keeps throwing his name in equation like he's a Superman. But this man goes by the name of Doctor Kenneth Green. This man bumped me with his car and knocked me over. Oh, you don't know who I know. I don't care who you know. You bumped me and knocked me over with your car, intentionally. And then he wanted to scream at me in my face and mention his name again, drunk, both times. And I hope this makes it all the way to his porch, because this man is despicable. You're a teacher in a ministry, not a preacher. I don't preach. I just talk to people about God and His business. To try to straighten their minds out from the pimps to the gangsters to the hustlers, everybody, I just spent the weekend with Fillmore Slim. You probably know that man, because he's on his deathbed. He's 89 years old. And I had to hear some type of trilogy that just kind of set me straight that he had to go through everything that he had to go through. But I believe in people's forgiveness. Everybody falls short of my God's glory. I don't care who you are, what you think. But I'm trying to do everything I can for my homeless people, for Homeless for Heaven Community Organization, because I believe in them, and I know they can make it past all this stuff. I don't know where y'all putting them all at. You're kicking them out of downtown. But the Occupied Movement made it accountable, but wherever you took their stuff, you had to pay them for their stuff. They actually paid for some of them things.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
God bless you.
Our next speaker is Mike Snell, and then Kevin Bolts.
Good evening, council. Mike Snell, owner of Off the Charts Dispensary in District 6. Just coming here on behalf of my fellow initiative members who can't be here, because due to their business structure, they are stuck in their businesses, working hard every day, paying absurd taxes, and still trying to feed their family. And with that being said, I understand because of the nature of the economy and other things that I've proposed as far as options to seek out an offset to the deficit if we do give cannabis locally a tax reduction. It's important, on one hand, that we get that, because obviously, that sends the signal to the state. Without that signal to the state, the state will just, will consider it like everybody else considers, well, it's a cash cow, everybody's doing fine, but that's not the case. I'm telling you this now, giving you a fair warning, I'm the only one out of your equity program that's actually profitable and doing successful because of my business decisions. Not everybody else is in my position, and they're struggling terribly, and they're going to fail before then, well, by the, before the end of next year. And I'm here telling you that now, out of a fair warning, so we need to find solutions. If you're prioritizing our tax dollars, us as operators need to be a priority in your staff meetings. And I direct that at you, not directly, Howard Chan, but in the Assistant City Management, as one of your success stories from the program that the city's heavily invested in, and I don't have direct contact to the Assistant City Manager who oversees this program, who oversees everything cannabis, and they don't even have the proper resources, this entire situation is destined to fail, and the youth are not going to have the money that they need. And this is a state of an emergency, like a serious situation. And I'm here because I care. I could be doing just fine with my mother, who's battling cancer in Long Beach, and tending to that versus trying to fight for what's right here in my local city. Thank you.
Mr. Snell, Assistant City Manager Laney Milstein is in the back, and she'll chat with you as well. Thank you. Thank you for being here, Mr. Snell.
Our final speaker this evening is Kevin Bolts.
I thought not calling for a ceasefire was the shittiest thing I'd see this council do tonight, but locking the doors during a public meeting and gaslighting teenagers is perhaps a new low. I used to want to be many things when I grew up. Pilot, labor organizer, freedom fighter. But now I only wish to be one thing. I wish to be like Khalid Nabhan, loving elder, brave man, beautiful human being. For the past 67 days, I've witnessed an unprecedented level of violence, death, and destruction that has only been outshone by a level of humanity and strength I didn't know was possible. 67 days. 67 days of vapid and empty statements from a Zionist mayor and a council unwilling to take a step as simple as opposing genocide, as simple as opposing crimes against humanity not seen since Stalingrad, Treblinka, and Auschwitz. As Professor and child of Holocaust survivors Norman Finkelstein says, "The situation in Gaza is as simple as my grandparents being shoved into gas chambers." What will it take? How many kids have to die? But what should I expect from a regime that has allowed numerous black and brown citizens to be brutalized and murdered by the police in the city with no accountability? The same police who employ tactics developed by the IDF in occupied Palestine. Every day's a murder. Kids get put in a grave, shot for his race in the place he was raised. Are we talking about Gaza? Are we talking about Stephon Alonso Clark? Are we talking about Joseph Mann? Are we talking about Daryl Richards? Yeah, keep looking up, eating your fucking snacks. We ain't talking about kids across the ocean. We're talking about people in the city. The same oppression and control and lack of human care that happens in Gaza is happening here. Not too long ago, someone froze to death, sleeping outside this fucking building, right out there, while some of you sat up here. And you know what happened? Nothing. They threw a little vigil, and his daughter flew out from whatever other state she lived in. Every year, you have a little thing where we care about the unhoused people who die, but not enough to fucking house them. So it's no surprise, the same people who let people die in the streets don't give a shit. The children are dying by the thousands in Gaza. Ceasefire now.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Vice Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. That concludes our agenda for today. We're going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting at 9:08 PM, and we'll reconvene in 10 minutes for the special meeting.